The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening.
It was fun though.
I'd like to call the Farmington Town Council meeting to order and ask you all to join us with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowe, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to suspend the rules of procedures to add an agenda item E to appointment to the land acquisition committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ascension. Okay, now we will have public comment. If anyone would like to address the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak. Okay. Consideration of special topics. Number one, public financing presentation. Kathy.
Nancy, before we start, I thought maybe we just go through the evening, how our different topics. So, we have first, we have Joe and Barry. He's our managing director of Phoenix Advisors. He's gonna, they're gonna give us about a 20-minute presentation, and then I thought we'd have time for questions and answers. And they're just gonna kind of try to give an overview. Then, from there, we were gonna have my direct reports come in with the schedule. We're gonna try to keep them to about 10 minutes total, so, because there's quite a few of them, and we don't want to go that late. So, they are all about, gonna be about five to six, seven minutes, and then for some general questions afterwards. We're hoping that that would, we're gonna be completed by that, by nine o'clock, and then from there, we will go into the budget targets. So, we're aiming to finish up sometime after nine. Usually, these meetings go from seven to nine, but this one's gonna be a little bit later. So, I think that's gonna be the process, and I'll just start with Joe and Barry.
And just so people know that under new business, the second item will be the item that we've added to the agenda, which is adding someone to the land acquisition committee. That's when that'll be taken up.
I'm not gonna speak, and Barry's gonna speak. Just wanted to introduce Barry Bernabi from Phoenix Advisors. They're the town's financial advisors that assist us with the, with our financing, our public financing, our bonds, our bands, everything of that nature. Barry will have a little presentation on the credit overview in general, and also on debt with the town, and some scenarios with the town.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Good evening. As Joe said, my name is Barry Bernabi. I've been working with the town for a number of years, been working with Joe for a while. It's a pleasure working with the town. My presentation tonight is gonna talk about, as Joe explained, a credit overview of the community, and also talk about some debt metrics. The first metric that impacts a town, when they come to me and say, "Listen, we're thinking of borrowing money for various projects." What's gonna be our borrowing cost? The first factor that determines your borrowing cost is the overall level of interest rates. Now, the chart on page two is a graph of the 10-year U.S. Treasury bond. The 10-year Treasury bond is a benchmark for long-term rates, or bonding rates. So, if we're gonna do a project that's gonna be amortized over a period of 10 to 20 years, we use the 10-year Treasury as a benchmark. Now, if you look at that chart, you can see, that chart plots 50 years of data, and the yield on the 10-year U.S. Treasury bond peaked in 1981 at a rate of 16 percent. Since then, since 1981, the early 80s, it's been bouncing around, but generally, it's been going down. It's been a long rally in interest rates, and they hit a 70-year low in July 2016 of 1.4 percent. And you can see that in that green arrow on the far right-hand side. Since then, since the election, long-term rates have blipped up a little bit, but if you look at that, the story on page two is that, from a historic perspective, long-term rates are still very, very low. So, that bodes well if a community's looking to permanently finance a project over a long period of time. If we go on to the next page, page three, it's a similar chart that plots the yield on the one-year Treasury bond. And this is a bogey or a benchmark for short-term interest rates. Now, typically, when a community borrows for capital projects, they typically don't go right to a permanent financing or a bond issue. They issue short-term, what we call bond anticipation notes, or bands. And this is a benchmark for those rates. The town has issued these bands for the sewer treatment plant, and they had an option to either borrow the money directly from the state on a short-term basis at a rate of 2 percent. We issued, the town issued, short-term bands at rates that were like, less than a half a percent, at least initially. And if you look at the left-hand side of this graph, you can see the Fed controls short-term rates, and they pushed short-term rates near zero since 2008, 2012, '13, '14, and '15. But over the last couple of years, you could see that they're pushing short-term rates up higher. So, those short-term rates are going up, long-term rates are staying kind of low, so you see that yield curve kind of leveling off. Short-term rates higher, long-term rates staying low. Now, a lot of people seem to think that long-term rates are gonna go higher, but they've been saying that for the last couple of years, that you better have your bond because rates are going higher. We haven't seen that yet, but people seem to think this could be the year that long-term rates start to go really up higher. Now, that's the first factor that determines borrowing costs, is where the overall level of interest rates are. The second factor is the, your bond rating. And if we look at the next page, we can see that the two major, two major rating agencies are Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. On the left-hand side of page four, you see the Moody's rating scale. The good news is, the town of Farmington is rated AAA, the highest rating possible, which is great. And you can see the Standard &amp; Poor's rating scale next to it. In all the communities that are rated in the state of Connecticut throughout the country, that's the rating scale. Now, it didn't fit all the scales there. If we were to plot where the city of Hartford is, it would actually be below, be off the screen, because they're down in the C category. So, the majority of ratings are in that scale, and I think it's something for, that the town is, has the highest rating possible, that allows for the lowest possible borrowing cost. A lot of people say, "Well, what's it take to get a AAA? What's it take to move our rating up? What's the risk of going down?" The factors that determine a community's rating is on page five. There's five major rating categories. The first one is management practices. This is assigned, 25 percent of the weighting of the, of the rating is assigned to management practices. They look at your management team, how much experience the finance director has, the fiscal discipline, the ability to plan, monitor, and manage government finances. Farmington rates very high on this. This is a big positive. It's very subjective, it's not as quantitative as some of the other metrics, but it plays a more and more important part to have a strong management team in place, and that's a good, Farmington is very strong in this category. The second one is the economy and demographics. Now, towns don't really have a lot of control over this. If you're Greenwich, or if you're Hartford, you know, it's, it takes generations to change your demographic profile. The good news in Farmington is you have a strong demographic profile. So, one and two are very strong. Then we go on to number three, financial performance. They look at your fund balance, and your budgetary discipline, how well you budget and generate surpluses at the end of the year, and how well you maintain an adequate reserve fund, or that fund balance. The fund balance is a very important component, because what we see a lot in Connecticut is that a lot of communities have trouble balancing the budget, and what they do is they, they take money out of fund balance to help balance the budget. And that helps on a short-term basis, but long-term, as those reserve levels go down, it causes your bond rating to go down too. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation, but fund balance levels are very important. And number four is debt management, how well you manage your debt. They look at various debt metrics, like debt as a percentage of your budget, and debt as a percentage of your grand list, and debt per capita. So, a lot of towns say, "Is our debt high? Is our debt low?" And what we do is, we look at these debt metrics to give them, help them get an understanding as to whether their ratios are high or low. And then number five is long-term liabilities. This is becoming more and more of an issue. The state of Connecticut was downgraded numerous times lately, partly because of the budget crisis, but also because the long-term liabilities are really eating into more and more of their costs, are going towards these long-term liabilities. They're not funded. And we see that in, even with a lot of large municipalities, that they have these large pension liabilities. It's becoming more and more of a problem. So, page five shows all the rating factors. Now, to start looking at some of these metrics, what I did on page six, when people say, "Well, is our fund balance level high, or is it low? Is it good, or is it bad?" One starting point is to say, we took all of the AAA-rated communities in the state of Connecticut, and we compared them, we took their total fund balance as a percent of revenues, percent of your budget. Now, on the left-hand side are the lowest ones, so West Hartford and Fairfield are on the low end. You can see Farmington is towards the low end, compared to the other Triple As. On the high end, you see Wallingford, Weston, and New Canaan. So, what this means is that, compared to other Triple As in the state of Connecticut, Farmington is on the lower end of the fund balance percentage metric. Another way to look at this, that's total fund balance. If we go to the next page, page seven, we see unassigned fund balance as a percent of revenues. Farmington's a little bit better here. The state median is about 12 percent for Triple As, and Farmington's about kind of in the middle of the pack. So, I think it's kind of healthy for, relatively healthy for Connecticut. Could it be higher? Absolutely. The thing is, fund balance is a little tricky, because as you struggle each year, as every community struggles to put the budget together, you try and generate a surplus so that that fund balance level maintains, stays at a healthy balance, but it gets, it seems like it gets tougher and tougher each year to not only maintain it, but to increase it. If we turn to the next page, page eight, it's a little bit busy on page eight. It's hard to see, but what I plotted there was all of the communities in the state of Connecticut, to give you a little perspective. Not only Triple As, all of them, from C all the way up to AAA. So, you can see, it's a little tricky, but kind of in the middle, towards the left a little, the yellow bar is Farmington. And the lowest one on this, under the far right, is West Haven. They actually have a negative fund balance. So, they've been under state oversight for a while, they just can't seem to pull themselves out of that. Surprisingly, if you look at the second one, Stanford's over there. Now, Stanford actually has somewhat what they call a rainy day fund. They keep their reserves out of their general fund. So, some of these numbers are a little deceiving. I tried to keep it as simple as possible, but it's not perfect. On the far right, some of the highest-rated communities, the highest fund balance, are some smaller communities in Fairfield, in Litchfield County. You see town of Warren, Sterling, actually Windsor-Lox has a high, very high fund balance level. So, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Windsor-Lox, but their demographic profile is, is not the strongest in Connecticut, but their bond rating is one of the strongest in the state of Connecticut. And the main reason for that is their reserve levels are so high. So, again, to me, the story on these charts so far is that, from a fund balance perspective, the town, the town has an adequate amount, it's sufficient, but relative to Triple As, and even frankly, the state of Connecticut, it could be a little bit higher to keep that AAA rating safe. Now, when Joe and I were talking with the rating agencies, they said to us, and I think if, if you read the report, it says that the reserve levels are kind of low. And Joe and I pushed back a little bit and said, "Well, they're not that bad." And they came back to us and said, "Well, we don't just compare the town to Connecticut municipalities, we compare it to a national database." So, if you look on page nine, I took a, just a sample of 10 communities throughout the country. I actually took this from a presentation I did for Stanford. Stanford was a AAA, but they got downgraded recently because their reserve levels were too low. Now, what jumps out at me at this is that, if you look at a community, say Chandler, Arizona, their unassigned fund balance as a percent of their budget is 35 percent. The average for these 10 communities throughout the country is close to 30 percent of their fund balance as a percent of their budget. In the Northeast, you just don't see reserve levels like that. A lot of it is just, I don't know if it goes back to the Puritan days, or just the Yankee way of doing things, our reserve levels tend to be a lot smaller in the Northeast. But on a national basis, which the rating agencies look at, they like to see reserve levels up to 30 percent. Now, we talked to finance directors, they say, "Well, you're never gonna see anything like that in Connecticut. Those levels are just too high." But you just have to be aware of that when we go to them, and the rating agencies say that that AAA could be under pressure in the next couple of years, if they see those reserve levels drop down.
I notice Cambridge, the only one in the Northeast, or the, at 40 percent.
Forty percent. It's amazing, you know, it's, it's a lot of money. You know, in this, again, these reserve levels are kind of touchy subject, because as residents or taxpayers say, "Well, listen, we're paying taxes at this level, and you have this reserve fund sitting over here, you know, why don't you," one end of the extreme says, "Why don't you use that reserves and help mitigate our taxes?" But the rating agencies look at it and say, "Listen, just as any individual, any corporation, any municipality, it's prudent to have a reserve fund for unexpected events." You know, it's just a prudent thing to have, to protect bondholders, to make up for unexpected events, and just be safe. So, it's just the world we live in, that the rating agencies like to see those reserve levels at a higher level. And that, again, the story on page nine is, on a national level, those reserve levels are much higher than they are in the Northeast. If we go on to page 10, we start looking at a few debt metrics. Page 10 is similar to the other charts that we've seen, all of the Triple As in the, in the state, and ranks them from, debt per capita from high to low. So, now, Farmington's on the, towards the right of this, which is a good factor. Your debt per capita is relatively low. Now, the unfortunate thing with this, this data came from the state of Connecticut from 2016. It does not include the $42 million ban issue that we did for the sewer project. So, if we were to include that in here, Farmington kind of moves over to the left more, that debt per capita moves up a lot higher. So, that is still, is what we call a short-term note. It's not bonded debt yet, so it's not really included in the mix, but it's, it's gonna be pretty soon, which will push those debt ratios up much higher. We go on to the next page, it's a little bit busy, but it's very similar to the other chart. It shows overall debt per capita for all the communities in the state of Connecticut. And again, Farmington's kind of in the middle of the pack, towards the lower end, but again, it does not include the roughly $42 million outstanding for the sewer treatment plan. Now, if you look at, if you look at the far right, the high ratios, you see communities like Waterford, New Haven, Hamden, Stratford, Hartford, and New Canaan. It's kind of a really eclectic group. You have a city like Hartford and New Canaan. So, sometimes you see these lower Fairfield County towns that are not afraid to issue bonds for school projects, for capital projects, they're not too concerned about their debt per capita. They just want to maintain the quality of life in the community. So, it's kind of interesting to see these. And some of the communities with the lowest debt ratios are some of these smaller communities that tend not to borrow for capital projects. Moving on to page 12, we look at another debt metric, which is debt service as a percent of total expenditures. So, the rating agencies like to see this no higher than 10 percent. The good news here is Farmington is pretty low on that. The ratio's about between 6 and 7 percent, and it's right around there with Simsbury, Glastonbury, Avon. The lowest on here is Wallingford. They tend not to issue too many capital projects there, but the story to me on page 12 is that this debt metric, the town of Farmington, looks pretty healthy, that is percentage of the budget. Moving on to page 13, this chart on page 13 is not a comparison anymore, it's simply showing the annual debt service requirements for the town of Farmington for debt that's already been issued. So, you can see those, it's roughly a little over $6 million a year, and if the town were to never borrow again, that debt drops each year, which is a big positive. Some communities, state law allows a lot of flexibility when you issue bonds. Some communities like Hartford, not to pick on Hartford, but if they were to never borrow again, Hartford's debt actually increases for the next several years, before it starts to eventually go down. So, some communities, when they issue bonds, they say, "Listen, we want to do the project now, we want to build this, we want to borrow the money now, but we don't want to pay for it. We want to skip the first several years, and then push the debt out for future administrations." You see that sometimes with lower-rated communities. In Farmington, they've never done that, it's just the opposite. They borrow money, they start paying it right away, and that allows for this drop-off in debt service. So, as we set up on the top there, some of those bullet points, we've gone over, about 90 percent of the town's debt is amortized in 10 years, which is way above average. The last few issues that the town has done, Joe has amortized it over 15 years instead of 20 years. So, actually, in the next 15 years, all the town's debt will be amortized. So, when you look at those blue bars dropping off, I put that, that black arrow going straight across. Some communities look at that and say, "Listen, if we don't borrow again, the debt will drop down, we could capture that decrease in debt service and use it to help mitigate other increases in the budget, wages, health costs, whatever the case is." However, other, most high-rated communities don't look at it that way. They look at it and say, "Wait a minute. We know we want to maintain this quality of life in our community. We know we have projects coming down the pike that we're gonna be doing in the next couple of years." So, they, they put together these capital plans to say, "Listen, the goal is to kind of keep debt relatively flat. So, as existing debt drops off, they layer in new projects to come in, so that the debt stays relatively flat, or it goes up a little, comes down a little, but for the most part, it drops down." If you were to wait like five or six years and let it drop down a lot, and then you do a capital project, it's gonna go down, and then it's gonna come back up again, it's gonna be that much more difficult. So, the rating agencies like to see communities that plan it out, and they know when projects are coming, they build it in, so there's no big spikes or no big drop-offs. In a perfect world, you would have a million-dollar drop-off in a couple of years. I know this happened once in the town of Bethel, they had a big drop-off, those coming on in the debt service, their high school was being paid off, but they knew the middle school needed a lot of work. So, they timed it out, so that the, the drop in one school project went right into the coming on of another school project, so their debt actually stayed flat while they were improving their school system. So, a lot of that, that planning is what we try to do. On page 13 too, is if you look up on the top, see that little red dotted line? Now, the town's budget's roughly a little over $100 million. 10 percent of that is roughly $10 million. I assume that the town's budget grows about 2 percent a year, so that's why that line kind of angles up. The town is way, that's the 10 percent of budget guideline. So, if your total debt was above that line, that would set off some warnings for the rating agencies to say, "Hey, listen, your debt's getting kind of high, you have to watch it. That could be a risk of a downgrade." But currently, your debt's way, way below that. So, if we look at a few borrowing scenarios on page 14.
I just want to add that here, I think Joe and Kathy do a great job of showing us that. And that's why you'll see in Farmington, we don't do, we don't, as you say, we don't have those huge ups and downs, or, you know, we really have a very level kind of a system in government, which is, is really.
No, absolutely, it is. Historically, that's the way it's been, it shows good planning, and like I said, goes back to that management score in the beginning, to have that forward planning, to try and plan for these, the best you can. Sometimes things come up that are unexpected, but the more planning you have. In fact, like I said, some communities, as I said, when their debt goes down, there'll be a couple of years where they, they don't have a capital project, and their debt drops a few years. What they'll do, like Cheshire does this, Newtown does it, they'll actually keep their debt at the same level, even though it went down a little bit. They capture that savings, put it into some kind of debt reserve fund, because they know in a couple of years, another big project's coming down the pike, and they can say, "Listen, instead of letting our debt service decrease, taking that money out of debt service and having it go somewhere else in the budget, they kind of keep it in debt service, so that when the next project comes down the pike, they have a reserve fund there to help mitigate any big spikes." Again, to try and keep that debt line as level as possible, instead of going up and down. On page four, we look at three different scenarios. Scenario one is assuming there's no new bonding. Scenario two is a proposed $2.1 million project in the spring of 2019, and then scenario three shows roughly $5 million permanent financing for the sewer treatment plan.
Fifty.
What'd I say?
Five. We'll take it.
Sorry about that. 50 million. So, on page 15, it's a little bit busy, but it's a spreadsheet. On the left-hand side is the town's existing bonded debt requirements in columns B, C, and D. Now, if you look at column E, it's all in red. Column E shows the decrease from one, from one year to the next, the delta, the drop-off. So, the fact that that's all red is a big positive. Like I said, some communities structure their debt where it actually goes higher, so you have no flexibility at all. But if you look at that, you've got some pretty big drop-offs. In 2022, it's almost a million dollars. In 2021, it's $738,000, and 2022, it's almost a million dollars, and in 2023, it's $1.6 million. So, that provides a lot of flexibility for future capital needs. In the middle of the page shows the proposed bonding. Again, this scenario one assumes no new debt issuance, so those are all blank. So, on the far right is just existing debt again, and on page 16 is just a graph of that, which is similar to the graph we just looked at. The blue bars are the town's existing debt service, and the red line is the 10 percent of budget guideline. So, you're currently way below that. So, if we go on to page 17, scenario two, again, on the left-hand side is the town's existing debt. In the middle of the page, column F, G, and H, is a proposed bond issue of $2.1 million. So, you can see in column F, the principal payments, column G is the proposed interest payments, and in column H is the proposed debt service, principal and interest. So, on the right-hand side, we take the existing debt plus the proposed debt and add it together. Now, the story here to me, the good story, is if you look at column L, this is the difference from one year to the next, they're still all red. So, even by borrowing $2.1 million, the town's debt service will still decrease each year. And again, the magic, the secret sauce there is, is because the town's existing debt is amortizing so quickly, it completely, completely mitigates the impact of $2.1 million. And the graph of that is on the next page, page 18. Again, you see the blue bars, and then you see like a little red bricks lopped on top of the blue bars, which is the proposed debt for the $2.1 million. It's almost, you almost don't see it, it just blends right in. So, again, these small issues, 2 million, 3 million, 4 million, 5 million, really not gonna impact the town too much, because your debt drops off so aggressively. But if we keep going forward to page 19, so now, this is the roughly $50 million permanent financing for the sewer treatment plan. So, now, this is kind of a, it's not $2.9 million, it's a lot larger, so there's gonna be an impact with a borrowing this large. So, you see in column F, roughly $2.5 million a year in principal payments. The total of column F is the $50 million. Column G is the interest payments over the next 20 years, and those are at 2 percent, assuming that you go to the state's clean water fund borrowing, which is hard to beat. You get a grant, and you can borrow money from the state at 2 percent. Now, when, when the town borrowed it on a short-term basis, we actually went to the traditional markets and issued bond anticipation notes at a rate that was much lower than 2 percent. Joe, I forget exactly, but I think you might have saved, was it, over half a million dollars, I think, right?
About closer to $1 million.
By taking advantage of those short-term rates that were in place. And now that those short-term rates are going up, I think, Joe, you're looking to go over to do the permanent financing with the state. So, so on page 19, we see a rough projection of that permanent financing. If we look over at column L, not every number is red anymore. The first year of this bond issue is gonna cause an impact to the town's budget. The first year of this bond issue is going to cause an impact to the town's budget. And you can see there, it's about roughly $3.5 million. If we look to the next page, page 20, we see a graph of that. So again, we see the blue bars, which is the existing debt for the town. And then we see those red bricks that I colored in, which is the proposed debt service for the $50 million permanent financing. So the town's debt is going to go roughly from a little over 6 million, and that first year is going to get up close to $10 million. So you're still below the 10% of budget guideline, but it is going to have a budgetary impact. And then after the first year, it's going to start dropping off again as the town pays off some of that principal and interest for the next 20 years. So this concept of the graphs and the planning things out is a lot of what Joe and I work on when there's capital needs out there, to try and structure it in. Again, because you're going with the state of Connecticut and getting such a good interest rate, they kind of lock you into their terms on that permanent financing. I think that the maximum term is the 20 years. And so I think that, Joe, you've already started budgeting and planning for that spike in debt service coming down. So just to kind of wrap up things, my last slide here on page 21 is just a summary, just to kind of recap a little bit. Long-term rates have increased a little bit, but still not that far off from 50-year lows. But those short-term rates are starting to increase. Federal Reserve is pushing up short-term interest rates. The town currently has the highest rating possible from Moody's, which is a AAA. And between Moody's and Standard and Poor's, Moody's is by far the more difficult of the two rating agencies. So the town is going to the most conservative one. A lot of communities have moved away from Moody's. There was an article recently, the state of Connecticut doesn't even go to Moody's anymore because Moody's downgraded them so much. They've gone to Standard and Poor's. So Joe and I have been thinking about it in the future. If Moody's keeps giving us kind of negative feeling, we may explore going to a different rating agency. But for now, the town is a AAA from the most conservative rating agency out there.
Is there, is there any negative switching to, from Moody's to S and P?
I don't think so. We've been doing it with some other clients that we work with, and we haven't seen any negative implications. And again, the main reason, I think, for it is Standard and Poor's actually assigns more value in their categories to the management team, how well you, the town has done with what you can control. And they don't seem to penalize you as much for factors outside of your control. The headwinds that the town has is that, as I think we all know, the state is really in a crisis mode with the budget. The rating agencies just seem to think, no matter what anyone says, the state's problems are going to become the municipality's problems. It's going to come downstream. And there has not been a rating upgrade in Connecticut in over two years. There's only been downgrades. So there's just, the rating agencies just don't seem to think, they see not a lot of businesses coming into Connecticut, high cost of living, high cost of doing business, state budget crisis, all negative news. So it's just a tough environment to be in there. The good news again with the town is the existing debt is amortizing very aggressively. 90% in 10 years is amortized, which is way above average. As we talked about, most moderate-sized bond issues, $5 million, $6 million, won't really impact the town that much, but large bond issues will, as they would in any community. Once you get up to 20, 30, 40, 50 million, you're going to feel some sort of budget impact. And the last budget there is, last bullet rather, is, for traditional bond issues, the state did give municipalities a little bit more flexibility to typically, you can only go out 20 years for a school, for a bond project. They increased that to up to 30 years now for any project, whether it's sewers, schools, roads, anything. They amortize it over 30 years instead of 20 years, which helps soften the impact a little bit. But just like a 30-year mortgage versus a 15-year mortgage, your payments will be smaller, but you end up paying a lot more interest over the longer time period. I know I went over a lot of stuff, I talked a lot. We talked about debt metrics, we talked about the rating process. Just to recap it again, the town has a great bond rating, you have a good management team, fund balance levels are healthy, but towards, could be a little bit higher compared to other AAA-rated communities. And your debt metrics now are pretty good, but when that debt for the treatment plant comes on, they're going to be somewhat elevated. So if there's any questions at all, or if I said something that was confusing, trying to address it.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one question on page five. So as you were kind of going through these five categories, you kind of spoke to, for management practices, you said Farmington rates very high on this. For economy and demographics, you said we also have a very strong rating there as well. For financial performance, you said our fund balance could be a little higher, but overall we're in good shape there. And for debt management, our percent of the budget is below that 10% threshold. How about the last category? I didn't hear you comment specifically on Farmington in terms of long-term liabilities.
I think it's relatively healthy there, too.
Okay.
The town is, what we see, to just use an extreme example, not to pick on any one community, I work with the town of Hamden. Hamden has a large unfunded pension liability. They go to the rating agencies and they say, listen, we have a surplus this year in our general fund of $1 million. So they kind of look for a pat on the back from the rating agencies. And the rating agencies look at them and say, well, wait a minute, you have a $300 million unfunded pension liability, and your pension ARC, what you're supposed to put in is $20 million a year. They only put in $2 million a year. So the rating agencies say, wait a minute, if you put in what you were supposed to put in, you really have a deficit in your general fund. So they're paying more and more attention to this, if communities are addressing their pension liability and their retiree healthcare costs. I think in Farmington, you're in a healthy position there. Really, the only thing, again, the fund balance levels are healthy, but when you look at the AAA communities in Connecticut, Farmington is on the low end. And when you look at the AAA's communities throughout the country, it's just that much more magnified, that you're on the lower end.
And one last question. I think you actually spoke to this, I just, I forget exactly what you said. In terms of S and P, how does the weighting of these categories change in terms of how they view?
They put a lot more weight on the management practices.
Management practices.
They like to see a formal policy for fund balance, which the town has. They like to see debt policies, they like to see policies and procedures in place. They like to see discipline with the budget. They don't like to see one year, we have a big deficit, next year we have a big surplus. They like to see managed moderate growth in any tax rate. They don't like to see it one year where the tax rate goes down and the next year it goes up three mils or something like that. They like to see consistency. So that whole management, it's a very broad component, but Standard and Poor's puts much more emphasis on that category.
Thank you.
I think, I just wanted to comment that, I think, was it four or five years ago? Or maybe I've lost track of time, but four or five years, I think, that the pension committee met, and you took that on, Joe, with the committee. And we could have been funded better, or did, they went through all the machinations of how we should be funding, and at that point, and you took that on, and we funded it, which was something we had to take on in our own budget, making sure that we had the funds there to make sure the pension would become whole, would be whole. And that was something that we undertook and took a couple of years with our budgets of working through that, but the pension committee, you know, led by Joe and
Right, I know.
Really took that on, and we were really proud of that.
No, it is great. Because, you know, the reality is, it's easy, the state calls it a holiday. They say, we're going to take a holiday from contributing to the pension. You could do that for a year, you could do it for two years, you could do it for three years, just underfund the pension. But at some point, it really catches up to you. Again, like in Hamden, again, not to pick on them, their pension actuary, there's a statement in there that says, this fund, their fund will be bankrupt in three years if they don't put more money into it. So we had, they had to issue pension obligation bonds. It's just a very slippery slope when a community starts deferring these long-term liabilities because they have a way of catching up and putting it into a deep hole.
Paul.
On page 20, so when the sewer treatment plant kicks in, you know, look, for a couple of years, we're going to be close to that 10% threshold. How, and I know there's a lot of variables, and I might be oversimplifying it, but how much debt can we take on in the next two years and keep AAA? I mean, ballpark. I know it's a lot of variables.
It's a tricky question. If you look at that other chart, debt is really only about 10% of the overall.
Of the overall factor, yeah.
So you could go above that 10% limit, and that by itself won't necessarily cause a downgrade. But if that increase in debt service causes your fund balance to go down and causes you not to put in as much as you should with pension and other costs, all those things together could cause that rating to go down. Now, the last time Joe and I talked with the Moody's, I don't want to speak for you, Joe, I got kind of a vibe that they were saying that you guys make one mistake, your fund balance drops a little bit, there could be downward pressure on the town's rating.
Correct. It was, basically, it was a, the challenge was thrown at us that, you know, we start, we make one mistake and we compound it, you know, we're going to see a rating downgrade. And I think it's not just on Farmington, because I think that's something that Moody's is working out with everybody in this environment, in the state, so. But really, the challenge was out there, if you do out the credit report, you can saw what they said for, for negative factors, with the, the reduction in fund balance, increase in debt loads. Again, they're looking for, when you, they banned your management practices. Like you said, we have strong management practices, we started banning those management practices, and banning that budget discipline, but that's going to get rid of problems with that.
From a legal perspective, you could borrow 100 million, you could borrow.
There's no limit, yeah.
Right, there is, but it's very large, a billion dollars. But from a realistic standpoint, they look to see how much is a town willing to increase your mill rate to cover that debt service.
Gotcha.
Now, if there were another large project that was out there, timed similar to this $50 million for the sewer treatment plant, that would put even more pressure on the town. But if it was just $2 million or $3 million, that in itself wouldn't impact it at all.
Nancy.
Go ahead. But Barry, one of the things that we've talked about quite a bit, and this council's a brand-new council, is that we've structured our debt such, and you've been talking about, is that we've been very aggressive because we've known about the treatment plant way in advance, and that we also then have the capacity to take on more debt once we kind of get over the hurdle. As you can see, even with the treatment plant, in the, in the plan, there's lots of capacity, well, not lots, but there's capacity for more debt for us to take on. It's just a timing issue of when we can take it on.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. If you look at page 20, you'll see that even with that debt coming on, in about four years, you'll be below, in five years, you'll be below where you are now in debt service. So you're right. If you could time it and defer some capital projects, that your existing debt is running off aggressively, and that provides a lot of flexibility going forward to mitigate any new debt, as I've said a number of times.
So when we're looking out at 20, 21, 22, we see that dropping?
Right.
When that's the time to take on other debt?
Right. It would fit in much better out there, absolutely.
Questions?
I have, Barry, just thank you again for a great presentation. This one jumps out at me, and you mentioned it a few times, and I thought I'd ask, on page nine, can you look at our national fund balance levels?
Yes.
I just, again, I just have to ask, I'm curious, do we know how many of those communities operate under county government and then municipal government? And how would that affect, because as you know, in Connecticut, we don't have that other layer.
That's a good point. You're right. The types of government are different out there. There's, in Connecticut, we don't have, we have counties, but they're not county government. So, yeah, that came up in Stanford, too, to say, well, wait a minute, you know, is it really an apples-to-apples comparison? I have to be honest with you, I'm not sure a lot, you know, I just went out and grabbed this data, and the analysts come back and say, especially Moody's, they're very quantitative. Like I said, they don't put as much emphasis on the management, they just have their spreadsheets. And they put in Farmington or Stanford, and they compare it to other national communities, and they look at fund balance, and it just sticks out in Connecticut that our levels are lower. But that is a good point. I think county government could play a part into why some of their numbers are much different than it is in Connecticut. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for all that information.
Hopefully that made sense, and, you know, sometimes I like the graphs to go in just to help get the point across.
Thank you.
Kathy, how do you want to do this? Our next on our item is Chief Paul Malanson. And Paul, I guess, how do you want to do it? Do you want to have him sit in front like we do, like for the budget meetings and stuff? So why don't you come on up, Paul?
We have the mic here.
Yeah.
So if you can sit over there.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Hello, hello. I feel like this is back in 2009, my first council meeting with all new faces. So Kathy had asked us just to do a brief, very brief, department kind of update in what we do, and I'll obviously answer any questions for you or anything like that afterwards. But I just have kind of a little bit of an outline of structure. So I've been here in the Farmington Police Department since 2009. Prior to that, I did almost 20 years of West Hartford Police Department. Here in Farmington, we have 46 sworn officers. That includes all of our supervisors, detectives, school resource officers, all of our police officers. Last year, we responded to 23,438 calls for service. We made a little bit over 600 custodial arrests. And the number-one complaint that we receive at the police department that we deal with is, as you can imagine in Farmington, traffic. So that is the absolute number-one thing that we kind of deal with most of. And it's from traffic not running smoothly to speeders on roadways, to people not obeying stop signs or headlights and those sorts of things. So it varies, the complaints. We're very active, traffic-related. Last year, we stopped 5,600 cars. Not every one of those got a ticket, but we did stop 5,600 cars. We have 11 dispatchers in Farmington who dispatch fire, police, and EMS for the town of Farmington. You should know also that we are a regional dispatch center, which gets us some state funding. So we answer all 911 calls for Burlington. And that allows us to become a regional, what they call PSAP, allowing us to get some state funding for that dispatch center. We dispatch fire department for Burlington. However, if it's a 911 call for police, then what we do is we forward that to the state police. So automatically, we just transfer it to the state police. If it's for fire, then we dispatch fire services for the town of Burlington. We average about, in the dispatch center, we average about 48,000 routine calls a year and about 12,000 911 calls per year. Some of the programs that we have going on, you may have seen, we have a community emergency response team, a CERT team. It's made up of 35 civilian volunteer members, and they've been utilized in numerous occasions to support the police department during the times of emergency or special events. Their primary responsibilities include assisting with road closures during parades, storms, accidents, train and traffic control, CPR, and emergency shelter management. We have a community service officer program, a CSO program. This was developed in response to increasing complaints of littering, trespassing parking, and other nuisance town code violations along the Farmington River and on the town recreational property, properties. The program began in July of 2014, was expanded in July of 2015 due to its overwhelming success. CSOs are part-time, Town of Farmington employees. They wear readily recognizable uniform and report directly to the police department shift supervisor. They primarily work during peak weekend hours on all town recreational properties. Their purpose is to augment the police patrols to provide visibility, guidance, and enforcement of municipal code violations on the Town of Farmington recreational properties. Feedback since its inception has been exceedingly positive, and the complaints and littering on our property have decreased substantially because of this program. And just so you know, those CSOs are mostly college kids who are in criminal justice programs, and they're part-time employees. And, you know, that's why during the summer, we employ them on the weekends usually. One of the things I think that is always highlighted when you talk about the police department is the relationship and the collaboration with the school system. We are very proud of our relationship that we have. We have three officers assigned on a full-time basis to the school systems. They not only provide school safety They not only provide school safety and security through their continued presence, but also closely collaborate with school administration on issues such as school safety plans. They present, they make presentations for staff and students on a variety of topics, and they really strengthen our relationship between the school personnel, the parents, the students, and police officers. And obviously, I don't know, anybody saw the news, but there was another school shooting today, those sorts of things. And what's the one thing you always hear in those? Nobody ever thought it would happen here. And if you know it's a very rural town that this occurred in, we work very closely with our schools in order to help, not only, obviously, to prepare to respond, but also to try and prevent. So, there are things that the school has in place when they have concerns about people or things that aren't happening right. We have a mentoring program. There are about 13 of us at the police department that mentor students. I started with a student in seventh grade, he's now a senior in high school, you know, and it's just, it's a great program. It's one more thing that we do with the schools, but very, very proud of our relationship with the school system. Talking about our traffic enforcement and safety, so that you know, Farmington Police Department, for a fifth year in a row, has won first prize in what they call the Connecticut Law Enforcement Chiefs Challenge. The challenge is coordinated by the International Association of Chiefs of Police and the Connecticut Department of Transportation. It recognizes the best overall traffic safety programs. Our success in this program is derived from the aggressive enforcement of law enforcement, of motor vehicle laws, the participation in state and nationwide safety campaigns. You may see our bulletin boards up there every now and then, you know, click it or tick it, or buckle up, or distracted driving, give cyclists three feet, those sorts of things. Our educational initiatives and collaboration with our community stakeholders in improving traffic safety in the town of Farmington. And lastly is national accreditation, which we will be, the assessors will be on-site in March of this year again. The Farmington Police Department was originally accredited in 1992. Since that time, we successfully attain reaccreditation every three years, most recently was in 2015. What this reaccreditation requires is that we be in compliance with 482 nationally-recognized professional law enforcement standards. And compliance is determined by an independent review of department policies and operations by these Kalia assessors. In 2009, we were designated as a flagship agency, and in 2012 and 2015, again, we were given an award for excellence in accreditation. So, and they will be back, the assessors, and they'll have a public information session, they'll be meeting, I'm sure, they usually will meet with the town council chair, the town manager, school, but they'll have an open public forum also for people to comment about the police department, pros and cons, those sorts of things. So, I encourage you that time. We'll send out an email and information to the public, but feel free to share your thoughts. And that's my briefing on the police department.
Any questions for Paul? Okay.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Russ Arnold, and he is our Director of Public Works.
I know it. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Russ Arnold, I am the Director of Public Works, engineer. We have seven departments in the Public Works Department. We have Westwoods, Highway and Grounds, Water Treatment, Water Push Control, which you tend to heard something about tonight, Building Official, Fire Marshal, Engineering. We handle pretty much everything that the fire department and the police department don't handle, garbage complaints, we end up getting involved with that sometimes, snow removal, first responders, trees down, wires down, things like that, to make sure the roads are safe. We provide consultation to residents, to our planning and zoning, for plan reviews, building department, building inspections, which we've been steady over the past 10 years with our building permits, which is a good thing. We have a couple of big projects coming up. We have the Mormon Temple, which was a big project a couple of years ago. We have another big subdivision coming in just up the street from that, across from the Wooden Tap, that's scheduled to start sometime this spring. We go for as much funding as we can through CROG and the state for construction projects.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure.
I don't know if the public can hear you behind this.
Can't hear me, is that better? Does this microphone work?
I don't know if it's a microphone. Yeah.
It is?
It is for the video. Go ahead.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Funding, we try and obtain as much funding as we can for the town through CROG and the DOT for our road projects. I believe in the last 13 or 14 years, we've got about $14 million to reconstruct several roads in different projects, not including the treatment plant funding through the Clean Water Fund, which was about $15 million. We handle complaints, which we, knock on wood, we get very few about winter season, it's snowplow, you know, everyone complains about our, the mailboxes getting hit. Not everybody, but we get a fair number of them. We do our best not to hit them, it's typically the snow coming off the plow. We deal with a lot of residential questions on their, you know, their home drainage issues. We've learned over the years that drainage really does occur in Town of Farmington, and people don't like to see the water in their backyards, but it happens, and we try and deal with it appropriately. We have a pretty good one-stop shop as far as subdivisions. We have the Fire Marshal, Building Official, Planning and Zoning, Engineering, all in one office in the development wing right upstairs. And we get a lot of compliments about how we process subdivision plans and people coming in submitting their applications, that when they come in, they want to talk about a project or a proposal, everybody comes in, we sit down and meet with them, meet with the developer and their engineer, and usually within about an hour, they have clear direction on what we would like to see or what is needed for our regulations.
Leaves?
A leaf. We have the leaf program, which is a big hit in town.
Bulk pickup.
Bulk pickup twice a year. I think it was in 2008, we switched over to automated garbage pickup, and then in 2011, we did, went to the automatic recycling, which is huge. We handle a lot of different things, and a lot of different daily tasks come up, which is part of the reason that we have such a pretty good job, that you don't know what tomorrow's going to bring. It's exciting, it's a lot of fun to help people out that you've known for a lot of years, and we do our best to keep Farmington the way it is and work with our school system, the police department, and all the other departments to make sure that everything gets coordinated as far as their plan review and project in town, the carnival, the, you know, things at schools, the school events, graduation, voting day, we get involved with all of it, so.
Russ, why don't you say how long you've been here, and maybe your background a little bit?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I've been here, what, 23 years for the town. I grew up here, my parents have lived here, it's not much more I can say, but it's a pretty great place. And it's, I'm proud to work here and say that I grew up here and can help people out that move here and want to raise their families here. With that, open it up for questions.
Any questions for us?
I'm just curious, do you, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm just curious, do you happen to know how much the town saved in 2008 when they switched over to the automatic garbage pickup?
Oh, savings? We, not off the top of my head, but it did, we reduced our tonnage, you guys went to Hartford, I don't have those numbers with me, but can get them for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, not a problem.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
I have two questions. In terms of the street repairs, you know, approximately, you know, how, how do you get those requests? Is that like inspections, or do you get complaints surrounding town streets?
They come in frequently. We, Scott Zenke and I, my highway superintendent, we will drive around numerous times throughout the year. We have developed a list from years ago based on road condition, the last time it was paved, if there's a subdivision that may have been extended off of it, there's many factors that go into our review. That list is a moving target based upon each winter, you know, like this winter when we had that two, two or three weeks of very cold weather and temperatures, that's going to cause a lot of problems when the frost comes out, it's starting to come out now. So, that, we have that list, and you'll be getting that coming up in our budget meeting of what our proposed, our streets are for this year. And we have a future outlook that, to be honest, I like to hold close to my chest because everybody wants their road paved, but I have to say, in the past 10, 12 years, we have been very proactive with funding that, with our, through our paving bond. We try and do five to six miles a year to get us on about a 20-year cycle. We, when we go in, we, we just don't go in and pave one street here, one street there, we go in and we look at it from a scientific standpoint, almost, at, like the Highlands. We'll go in and start paving, we'll do a portion of the Highlands, we'll do a portion of Lake Garda, we'll do a portion of Farmington, you know, Farmington Center. If you noticed, last year, we paved Garden Street and all the side roads between Route 10. So, we go in and we, it's cheaper for us to go and do it by, in blocks, because you don't pay the, our subcontractors to mobilize and move their equipment, and they stay right there and do the majority of their paving in that one area, we get a cheaper price. So, we do that, and we get complaints, people obviously want their roads paved, we work diligently with the utility companies, such as the water company, the gas company, to make sure that we don't, our paving schedule doesn't conflict with their utility replacement or upgrade schedule. Unionville Center, for example, Sylvan Avenue, Sherman, et cetera, we were going to go in and pave that this year. We met with the water company, I meet with the water company probably every six months, and they had an issue, something popped up, they had a request, they're going to go in this spring, they're going to start replacing the water main and extending a little bit on Sylvan, so we held off our paving and switched gears and moved around a little bit. Same with the gas company. We meet with the gas company every spring to come up with what their proposal for gas main extensions are, and then we'll move, we'll rotate our paving around that and let them get done. A prime example is Oak Ridge, Chaffee, West District Road. We were going to pave that, we pushed that off because they extended the gas through there. And then we typically wait a, you know, a year or so to let that trench settle, to let all the connections get made, so we're not paving, and then someone calls up and, I can't have a crystal ball, and if I did, I'd be doing something different, I think. But the minute we pave, that's when someone wants to dig it up and tie in, but we wait till the majority of the people have tied into that new utility.
Thank you. I got one more question. And you have planning and zoning, so I'm assuming that you are in charge, or your area's in charge of the zoning enforcement, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Can you explain a little bit how that would work for a zoning enforcement officer, and how often, what that process is, and, you know, do we have enforcements that are going on, and how many do we have per year?
That's a big file. Typically, what happens, somebody would call and complain about their neighbor, and everybody, you know, wants to be anonymous. We have a gentleman who's doing it for, Bruce is doing it probably about eight years now. Bruce has been here about 24 years, Bruce Seer, he does a great job at it. So, he'll take that call, he'll respond via email, however the communication comes in, he'll set up a meeting, go out to the site, go out to that particular residence, commercial property, and then start to, there's a whole policy that we have on how to handle certain infractions, and then we'll deal with it accordingly. We have a, if someone has moved, done work on open space, or put a shed or something on open space, Bill Warner, Paul Malanson, and I will meet if it's been determined the size of it, and if it's how big the infraction is, we'll determine how we handle our treatment of it. But we, we try to handle things very simply. We don't try to, you know, we give people time and to make a correction, we notify them that if there is an infraction, we give them time to correct it. And for the most part, the majority of them, majority of them are people who say, you know, are told, oh, I own to that tree back there, without having a survey of their property. And so, they'll put a shed up, or they'll put something else up, or clear trees, and we try and work with them so it's not, you know, a huge burden on anybody.
But there's different kinds of enforcement, so Bruce, there's obviously planning and zoning types of enforcement that we have the zoning officer, there's inland wetlands types of enforcement, and then our inland wetlands person handles some of that enforcement with our zoning officer. There's these open space types of enforcement issues, there's homeowner types of building enforcement. So, we have a zoning enforcement officer, but some of then, that then gets to someone else. So, if someone has too many unlicensed cars, that's like a police zone, a police issue.
Right.
So, then that goes to that. But the zoning officer kind of is the head, and depending on what the infraction is, does it, and then like development enforcement. So, if someone does something, again, we can't be everywhere, all over the place, but if someone has a planning and zoning, and they build something, and they don't build it towards that, then the planner could be part of that enforcement, the zoning enforcement person could be in part of it. So, there's all sorts of different types of enforcement.
So, in terms of planning and zoning, it would be Russ's area?
Yes.
It would come under me. Either I would get the call directly, Bill Warner would get it, Shannon Rutherford, the assistant planner, or Bruce Seer would get the call. Or we would direct the call or the issue to them, depending on the nature of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you, I think, it'd be good if you could talk a little bit about the schools and how you do actually all the snow removal, it's sidewalks, it's the parking lots, and also take care of all the fields. I think that's something that, it's something the town does with the schools, as Paul was talking about, the working together, and, you know, that might be something that people don't realize.
Yeah, no, we work hand-in-hand with Kathy Greeter and Tim Harris and Vince LaFontaine. We maintain the, all the parking lots at the schools. Basically, it's from the curb out is the town, from the curb in is the school system. So, we work hand-in-hand with the janitors, you know, through, with Tim Harris at each individual school, on snow removal and coordinating, so we're not plowing snow, for the most part, onto their freshly blown sidewalk, it's kind of counterproductive, and then we got to send a truck back, and so we work, that was a lot, we have, sometimes it can't, you know, we have issues, but we take care of it. We, the fields, we maintain all the fields at all the schools, and down the Tonxus Mead.
Rails to trails.
Rails to trails. We have a new project that was fully funded by the state of Connecticut to complete our rail, rails-to-trails system from Red Oak Hill to the Plainville Town Line. So, that was about a $4.3 million grant that we were given. So, we deal a lot with part, with recreation, coordinating game schedules, and making sure our field maintenance and irrigation is all in time and in tune with what their schedules are as far as soccer, and field hockey, and lacrosse, and baseball, and it goes on and on. Mudhogs, so, the one thing that is a big, big thing that I think we were able to accomplish was getting the turf field put in, was paid for by 50% from the state, and that's a multi-use field that has football, sock, field hockey and lacrosse, boys and girls lacrosse on it, and field space is always at a crunch and a premium. So, that was a big asset that I think we were able to accomplish, I think that was three years ago now, Times Flying Boats. So, we do work hand-in-hand with the school system, if there's a, we get Don Grayson, we get involved with busing issues and coordinating, helping her coordinate that, and signage. We are in the midst of purchasing our streetlights, to change that over to LEDs, so we'll have a significant cost savings on that. That's hopefully going to get started in the springtime, so that's a big undertaking. Did I cover enough on the field?
It involves a lot of facets.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Russ.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, and with the DOT.
We, we, I have to say, we are the only town in the state that meets with the DOT on a quarterly basis to discuss our projects and- to discuss our projects and review them, to make sure that they're being addressed and constructed in a timely manner. Any future projects, we, Kathy and I go and meet with them every quarter. We meet with the higher-ups over there to make sure that they understand what our needs are and what we're looking to get out of these projects. One project that I don't know if you saw the correspondence was the Unionville Bridge, which has been a big issue for us with the painting on it. It's been rusting. So we've got to, we're going to have to write a letter to see if we can get that back on to the list to get funded. But that's a big issue for us. But we do, we are the only town that meets with the DOT quarterly.
Seems like you meet with them more than quarterly too, from time to time.
Not at all. If we have to, if we have to, you know, meet more than quarterly, we do that. I have a very good relationship with the DOT. And their hands, their field people are excellent and it's, for the most part, easy to deal with. And they're receptive toward any changes during construction.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Steve Hoffman, he's our Director in Fire and Rescue Services. Steve is our, one of our brand-new employees. And how long have you been here now?
A little over two months.
A little over two months.
We have a perspective here. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So my name is Steve Hoffman. Again, been here a little over two and a, a little over two months. Been in the fire service, EMS service for about twenty years. I started as a volunteer at sixteen. Was a career lieutenant, Sikorsky Aircraft Fire. I'm still involved in the volunteer fire service in my department in my hometown. I'm an officer there as well, so whether I'm doing it here, I'm also doing it there as well. So that's kind of, I guess you do it all the time. A little bit about the department. Town of Farmington Fire Department is made up of three independent departments out of five stations. There's two mains, three main stations and two substations. There's Tunksis, Farmington Fire and East Farmington. Those, those stations are overseen by chiefs, fire chiefs, who assist me in doing the operations of those depart, of the whole department, budgets, training the officers and the firefighters, as well as maintaining apparatus and equipment. And we work together to make sure that our programs and services are delivered to the community effectively.
And Steve, just again, that the chiefs are volunteer chiefs.
Correct. There are, three of them are volunteer fire chiefs, correct. Again, volunteer fire chiefs and a primarily volunteer firefighting force of about one hundred and sixty volunteers. Eighty of those are EMTs, emergency medical technicians. They respond twenty-four seven. However, during the day, we also have eight career firefighters that man the stations from six AM to five PM. Obviously, the daytime because of volunteers, working, life commitments, things like that. The career guys cover those low volumes during the day. Fire service provides first responder level care at a basic life support level. So we have apparatus that are equipped for that and we respond to EMS calls throughout town, out of those stations. We also do fire suppression, rescue, hazardous material response. We have ATVs and boats and all different types of equipment and apparatus to respond to a multitude of different types of emergencies. Two thousand seventeen, responding to a little over four thousand calls and about three thousand of those were EMS calls. So a big load of the call volume that we do is EMS and medical calls. Some current programs and initiatives that we are undertaking. One is obviously recruitment and retention. Recruitment and retention is a big for us since predominantly our firefighters are all volunteers. And ensuring that we maintain that force as a volunteers, we have to keep bringing them in and retaining them. Challenge across the nation is the failing demographic of volunteers. Life commitments are volunteers that are getting up in age and the younger generation that's not stepping up to be volunteers. So we have to try to find a way and prepare to, for that. Added training requirements, it seems that the more we take on, the more training that's required, which means more time commitment. So these volunteers put in a lot of time, effort to respond to calls, the training and everything that's involved in that. We've created a recruitment and retention committee to research and create a plan, bring up ideas on how we can continue recruitment moving forward and into the future, a town ride recruitment process and plan to try to get new members in. We also built a new training facility up on Roundhill Road. It's a great asset for the fire department. I don't think too many municipalities across Connecticut that have their own training facility inside their municipality. Mostly it's all regional. So that's a huge asset, predominantly paid through, through both a venture with Avon, but volunteer Farmington firefighters raised the money for their portion of that. So it was all fundraising money. Obviously, that training facility allows them to maintain their skill sets and practice all the techniques that they need to do throughout their issuance of their duties. We're obviously creating an improvement and maintenance plan for that facility so it continues to provide for us into the future and to add any additional items that can help the firefighters in techniques and things of that nature. We also started a cancer prevention initiative. Basically, cancer is a big thing across the fire service. It's in the news and everybody's pushing it. That firefighters are that much more possible of getting cancer due to the exposure to carcinogens. So we've put gear washes in the three main stations. We're doing a classroom portion where an individual is going to come in and talk about cancer and the precautions of cancer for firefighters. And basically, we created a directive that makes firefighters clean their gear after and also some hygiene things so they can get all that, those carcinogens off their skin in an effort to limit their exposure to cancer long-term. We also created a health and safety committee. They've been tasked with creating a risk management plan and accident prevention program for the department. And that goes from here from emergency to non-emergency. So even in the firehouses and any types of accidents or injuries can be investigated and safeguards can be put in to prevent those. As the chief stated earlier, mass shootings are a hot topic right now because of what's going on. And the fire department is also making headway to prepare for that on the medical side. Working together with the Farmington PD to train our firefighters for the medical response in essence, if that ever were to occur. And we're working with our mutual aid departments as well. Because we have so many young officers and moving lines of succession, as like I said earlier, the volunteers are getting older, so younger guys have to step up and start taking on a leadership role. So we've created an officer development program. Basically, it's Prepare Knowledgeable Officer Corps for the Future of the Department. It deals with generational issues, communication skills, problem solving, leadership and management skills. And it's tailored directly for the fire service so that these young officers can be prepared to manage and lead volunteers into the future. I'm also working with the chiefs currently to update our strategic plan for two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. Basically, creating the initiatives to again, allow the Farmington Fire Department to progress into the future. Currently, right now, we just completed the survey phase, which was collecting input from all the members of the department as far as what they liked or their opinions of things in the department. And I'm in working and putting that together and I meet with the chiefs and then compile a strategic plan after that. We also have a cadet program. It captures young firefighters, young prospective firefighters from fourteen to seventeen. There's obviously different requirements under the age of eighteen, they can't go into fires and those types of things. So basically, it gets them involved in the fire service. There are some items that they can do, get some interest in, hopefully, they end up becoming volunteer firefighters in the future. So those are some snippets for my little over two months that I've been here.
That's a lot of snippets. So, questions?
So you mentioned the training facility. And I was very aware of how the community came together and supported that fundraising effort and it was quite a feat. You mentioned Avon Fire Department. Okay, so I think we were talking early on about possibly having that encompass some other fire departments in the area, but I guess I didn't hear what ended up happening, I guess.
We had asked for other Plainville and some other towns if they wanted to buy in or fundraise. And the only town that wanted to do it was Avon.
And then you also mentioned mutual aid departments. Are those a specific set of neighboring?
Mostly municipal, or I mean, the municipal departments around us would be the Avon, Burlington, West Hartford. A lot of this TEC stuff and the training for responding to mass shooters came out of the after-action report from a tabletop exercise with West Farms Mall. So that's mostly West Hartford, but it would be in conjunction with other mutual aid departments as well.
Yeah, I just have one question because I'm just curious. The driving of the trucks, what type of, who can drive the big fire trucks in? Is there a special license?
Yes, there's a Q endorsement that you have to go through training. So you have to go through a classroom portion, you have to go through practical exercises, backing, going through cones. And then you have to go through a driver training program at the department and get signed off before you can just start driving. Because there's more to drive, you've got to pump water and know how to operate all the equipment, things like that.
So do typically the volunteers get those licenses as well?
Yes, both current volunteer drive and have all those licenses.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I just want to mention another little thing that I know that you do as well as the police department is going in the schools, with the elementary schools. And the, and I think that's really a really nice thing that the kids are very familiar with police officers or the, or firemen and what they do. And it just, it's really a nice added piece that you do as a fire department with all the schools. And they're comfortable and you talk about what to do with fire. And that's another thing that the volunteers, that people do, that the firefighters do, which is very nice, just like the police department does as well, so.
And they love doing it, so.
Yeah. So that's great. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Nice job, Steve. Next, we have Rose Ponti, who is our Economic Development Director. Hi, Rose.
Good evening, everyone. I think I know most of you, but just in case, I'm Rose Ponti. I'm the Economic Development Director for the Town of Farmington. This is my fifth year here. Prior to that, I was eight years in the city of Torrington with their economic development, as their Economic Development Director. I started my career in finance. I was in international banking on Wall Street. And then I got married, raised my children, and then started a new career, one which I love. So thank you very much for this opportunity to be able to share with you what economic development is and what the department is trying to accomplish. So the goal of municipal economic development efforts is really to create this fertile business environment where businesses grow, jobs are created, the tax base is increased, but all the while maintaining the character of a given community. So tonight, and I was trying to think of how am I going to give you guys a good visual of what I do? I first said, "Well, maybe a gardener. I'm cultivating this fertile ground, I'm weeding things that can choke growth." And I said, "No, that's not all I do." So then I thought, "Well, maybe the point guard on a basketball team." He's looking at the team, he's trying to figure out who's going to have opportunities to score. I'm like, "No, that's not me either." So I had to fall back on what the best visual that I think an economic developer does, and that's a plate spinner. So if you've ever seen the plate spinner at the circus or like me at the Sullivan Show growing up, that plate spinner has to start spinning those plates and keep all those plates spinning at the right speed or else a plate will fall, break and cause a huge commotion. And that's in essence what I have to do. I have to keep an eye on all these different plates. So what are some of these plates? So the plates are really interesting and varied. One of them is making sure that I form relationships. First with my businesses to make sure I understand what are their needs? Why are they in Farmington? What are their challenges? Making sure they stay and grow. I also have another plate of having relationships with my residents. They're very important. What are their priorities? What is most important to them? Do they know what is in Farmington? Do they know the different businesses that are here? I also develop and host a number of events. Tomorrow morning, many of you are coming to the breakfast, over two hundred people are coming. And why is that important? Those type of events along with educational forum for small businesses, cluster forums for different cluster industries that we have. Those events really allow the business community, the town, to really start to form those relationships and those connections. Listening and communicating with not just the residents, but also with my businesses and also with all my internal colleagues, because that's very important. What a project, a development project that may be coming into town is going to affect public works. I have to constantly collaborate with planning and zoning to understand what are some of their requirements for any given project. I have to work with Joe many times, as you saw, the importance of making sure we have all that economic data. So when he goes to try to get the AAA bond rating, he'll call me and say, "Rose, what are the top employers? What's our unemployment rate?" And all this other economic development data that I keep, analyze and communicate it. So I'm communicating and having relationships with my internal departments, with my businesses, with my residents. But just as important is also making sure that I'm communicating and promoting Farmington out to my state partners, my regional partners, working with Hartford, with Plainville, making sure I know what they're doing, they know what I'm doing, and that we're all working together. So all of a sudden, you start to look and you start to understand that there are a lot of different components to creating this fertile kind of garden, making sure everybody's thriving. Another big component is making sure that we're creating an attractive place and that this town has a sense of place. So many of you notice the kissing balls at Christmas and the summer flowering baskets. But it goes to more than that. It's writing grants to fund repairs of sidewalks that may be cracked or in need of repair. It's making sure that I am working with Russ and working with Kathy and Bill Warner when we have the Route Four project for DOT, making sure there are certain components that are included in that project that mean a lot to Farmington, to make sure we're preserving our character. So with all of that, engaging the local community, engaging the people around, the towns around us, engaging the businesses, you can see that my plates are spinning. So what's a typical day like for me? Last week, I started off visiting a manufacturer who was thinking of adding on to his, to his property. He wanted to know what the tax consequences were. When I went to go visit him, I made sure he understood what his tax bill was every year and what it would have been in any of the surrounding towns around us. Having the lowest mill rate, he saw in black and white what it meant to have a business here in Farmington. While we were talking, he asked me about the very expensive bridge over on Route Six and how many of his tax dollars were used to pay for that. I was able to explain to him, "None of your tax dollars were used that." He was very happy. He then showed me through his entire facility, which was wonderful to see what he manufactured. But I asked him, "Do you know that there are a number of energy upgrades that you can undertake and it's going to help your bottom line?" He wasn't aware of that. I promised him I would give him those resources. I also told him that Connecticut has a wonderful consulting company just for manufacturers, that by instituting some maybe lean processes, he might not have to add on. He may be able to stay right where he is. So when I left, I promised that I would follow up with him. And he was really appreciative that I was there. Why? Because I helped him with his bottom line, the possibility of helping him save money, but at the same time, growing in Farmington. Before I came back to the office, I stopped at a small nail salon who was really struggling. I showed her how to get on Explore Farmington, our new lifestyle platform. Maybe she could promote herself for free on that platform. So she was happy. Back coming into the office, I knew I had lots of last-minute details to making sure the breakfast tomorrow is just right. And then I had another big meeting with planning and zoning because we have a restaurateur who's been here for thirty years who might have to relocate. We want him to stay in Farmington. So different plans were developed. We met with his consultant, his engineer, his architect, making sure the plan that they were working on is really going to fit well with our planning and zoning regulations. At the end of the day, I had a lot of follow-up emails, phone calls. The day was over and I couldn't believe another wonderful day in Farmington. So with all of that, you start to look. So is all these different plates, are we doing okay? And we are still the economic, I could say, we are the economic leader in the Hartford region. We have the second lowest mill rate of the forty towns in the Hartford region. Our grand list grew by point sixty-two percent. We had a twenty-two million dollar increase, which will, which last year generated approximately five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in new revenue. Our ratio of commercial taxable property is twenty-eight percent, which is really nice because the overall tax base is not formed totally by our residents. We have a very unusual statistic in that we have twenty-five thousand residents here in Farmington, but we have thirty-two thousand people that commute into Farmington Monday through Friday to work here. In businesses, we have over two thousand different businesses ranging from one-person home business to the UTC headquarters in town and everything in between. We have one point nine million square feet of industrial space. We have the lowest vacancy rate with less than five percent available in all of the Hartford region. We have two point five million square feet of office space. And as I said, those two thousand companies ranging from very small to in-between to very large. Sometimes, some fun statistics you may not know. We have the fifth largest bank all of Connecticut based out of Farmington, Farmington Bank. The sixth largest bioscience company. The sixth-largest bioscience company is Jackson Labs. The second-largest mall is West Farms. The sixth-largest hospital in Connecticut is here at Yukon. We have the third-largest insurance company based out of Farmington. Five of the 20th-largest manufacturers in Connecticut are right here in Farmington. Four of the 23 largest women-owned businesses from the Hartford region are here in Farmington, and the number one is in Farmington, Companions and Homewakers. We have two of the largest office parks right here of Greater Hartford, right here in Farmington, and three of the 22 largest registered investment advisory firms from the Greater Hartford region are right here in Farmington. They all call Farmington home. So, you could see that being the sole contact for businesses here in town is something that is really needed and something that the businesses appreciate, but that really adds to that vibrant business center. So, in closing, I really feel that we are in very good economic standing. We're really fortunate to have beautiful natural resources. We have an engaged citizenry. We have a thriving business community, excellent community services, well-maintained infrastructure, a well-run government. And it's easy to see why the Farmington Economic Development Department has a tagline, that Farmington is a great place to live, work, play, and prosper. So, with that, I open it up to any questions you may have.
Question, Madam Rose.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Rose. That was very informative, and you painted a great picture. I love it. What do you see as the challenges that we're facing?
Well, you know, a lot of what I do is really look at trends. And some of the trends that are a little bit, you know, when you look at the future, you are concerned about. And some of that has to do with the fact that we are almost completely developed as a town. We have quite a bit of open space, which I think is very important, and we also have most of the commercial land that is available has already been developed. So, how do we attack that? We look at redevelopment opportunities. We look at some buildings that are perhaps not being used to their highest and best use. How can that be turned around so that we can use those more effectively? So, that's one thing that, looking into the future, is of a concern. The other thing is that we are getting older. I myself hate to admit that about myself, but it's true also in our whole town population. We are looking at, and I think it's by 2025, I don't have the exact statistics in front of me, but the age group over 60 is going to be increasing by 30%. So, what does that tell us about Farmington? What are we going to do looking into the future as we age? Are we going to have the facilities required for a lot of these people who are aging? And if they are aging out, what's going to happen? How are they going to sell their homes? What are the trends? What are people looking at? The other trend to look at, too, is how do we get young people to come to Farmington? Really, to come to Connecticut? And then, once they want to look at Connecticut, to pick Farmington over any community? Do we have the kind of housing stock that they are looking for? A lot of the millennials right now either have very high student debt or are not interested in owning a home. They rather have very high-end apartments that they rent. So, do we have that right now in our housing stock? Not yet, but it looks like we may be having some projects. So, not only do we want this young population to come and continue vibrancy in our town, but we also have to make sure that we have the workforce. So, we have two of the fastest-growing technology companies in the U.S. We have them right here in Farmington. So, obviously, when they look to increase their workforce, they want to make sure that they get the talent they need. We don't want that company moving to Boston or moving to New York City. We want them to be here in Farmington. So, that's why we have to look at those amenities. We have to start looking at what the different trends are. Now, you know, believe it or not, with Uber and Lyft and maybe driverless cars, that could be very exciting, because we're not an area that has a lot of public transportation. But maybe having these new services, that could be a way to really address those issues and, at the same time, be able to work within our means, within our own infrastructure, and still offer the type of amenities that the younger folks, and some people just don't want to continue having cars. So, another trend that I think is very important is connectivity. Looking at all the different parts in town, there are lots of people who would love to ride their bike to work, that want to do even more walking. So, what Bill and I have been working on is making sure that we can start connecting. And if not in the front, but right on the state highway, perhaps some projects can start having trails behind. And all that connectivity, again, it adds to a sense of place. It adds to what young people are looking for, all of us are looking for. And it continues to make Farmington that special place that's maybe ahead of its neighbors. Anything else?
Sounds like you have a very busy job. So, you talk about a lot of the relationship and really staying connected. Can you talk to me a little bit about how you stay connected with the residents on some of the stuff that's going on?
Absolutely. I think one of the first things we did that really started that engagement with residents was, two years ago, we wrote a grant, Bill and I, to have some charrettes. And so, we had all of those paid for. It was a three-day charrette, and it was fabulous to see that many people come out and be a part of the discussion. We want to, we already have plans. Bill and I are looking at continuing and writing another grant to do another set of charrettes. And I really think that's one of the most important things we can do, because it not only allows us to hear what residents, what are their priorities, what are their concerns, how do they want us to address it, but it's also for the residents to hear us, to hear, "These are the trends that are happening. These are some of the challenges we're facing. How together are we together going to work towards making sure that Farmington is on good standing?" So, I think those charrettes are a part of it. The other big part is the Economic Development Commission just unveiled Explore Farmington. So, Explore Farmington is a lifestyle platform. It's still in its beginning stages. I am still, you know, struggling to get everyone to use it, making sure all the little kinks are worked out, but I really think that has a fabulous potential, engaging citizenry, because everyone can go on that site. It's free. We have different bloggers who are posting. I post constantly. And so, if you can all help me to get that word out and start using it, it would be fabulous, because I think that's going to be something that continues to allow us to be the most transparent we can be and having that line of communication open. A lot of towns have many town newspapers. When I was working in Torrington, we had the Waterbury Republican and the Torrington Register. I was constantly being called by one of them. One of them wanted to do a story. The other one wanted to do a follow-up. But we don't really have, we have the Hartford Current, we have the Farmington Valley Press, and we have The Patch. But it's not a one paper that everybody's reading on a day-to-day basis. So, that's why we're hoping this Explore Farmington becomes the new kind of newspaper where we all contribute to it.
That's great. And my last question, I know you talk about vacancy, office vacancies. What was that percentage? I know you said it, but I didn't have a sheet.
Oh, no problem. The industrial vacancy is excellent. It's at 5%, the lowest in the Hartford region. Our office space is at 13%, and that's at par with many of the towns around us. The difference is that we have so much more of it. We have 2.5 million. And again, looking at those trends, trying to understand what's going on with office space. A lot of people are working from home. A lot of people are what we call hoteling, where they work from home, but now the office space is more shared space. So, some of the things that we've been doing, when the big office complexes come to us, we try to look, is it more parking that you need? How do we address that? Are you aware of what you need to do? I just went to a year-end review, like, we have an annual breakfast that CBRE puts out, and they really started to say the market trends. What are office, what do people who are renting offices, what do they look for? Well, now, they want amenities. They want to make sure that there's outdoor space where they can have lunch. They want to make sure that their employees have the best broadband width. They want to make sure that parking is available. They want to make sure. One of the pictures was an office building in Hartford actually had like an outdoor fire pit so that their employees could gather outside and exchange ideas. Again, our job is to make sure we communicate that, not only to our office property managers, but also to our developers. And when those types of projects come in, if they don't have some of those amenities, when we're reviewing the plans, we tell them, "You know, did you ever think of doing this?" Because we want their projects to be successful.
Thank you, and I heard a lot about Explore Farmington, so great job.
Oh, good. Well, please use it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Rose.
Thanks, Rose. Next, we have Jay Johnson, who is our library director.
Good evening. I'm Jay Johnson, your library director, and I'm very delighted to be here this evening. Rose gave her resume. I'll give a little bit about mine. Something that no one knows here, I'm a submarine sailor, so I'm qualified on a nuclear submarine. Also, I've been the library director of five libraries in Connecticut, from Enfield to Greenwich and back up here. And this is by far the best place I've ever been, I think principally because of the wonderful people I've worked with, although I'm kind of the stepchild, because I'm not really a town employee. I work for the Farmington Village Green and Library Association, which is a 501(c)(3) association, which supports the library, Stanley Whitman House, Memento Mori, and the town green, which is currently being torn up. So, that's where I'm coming from. You know, U.S. News and World Report, 15 years ago, 100% of their employees were gathering news. Today, only 30% are gathering news, and the rest of them are gathering information for their services, best colleges, best doctors, and so forth. Your libraries are no different than that. This is a very dynamic, ever-changing environment. And what we have done is we've tackled the change, which is necessary for us to go forward in a positive way without sacrificing the legacy services, children's literature, adult reading, gathering space, family living, all the things that you think of when you think of a library. And I'm very, very, very happy to tell you that some of our most interesting and current programs have been in the field of technology. For example, two years ago, we opened our first Makerspace. Now, we proceeded the schools. The schools, the maker movement is something which is very important to libraries, because libraries are always thought of as being a place to go and get information. And all of you know, if you want to know how much your car is worth, you don't have to go to the library anymore and ask for the NADA book. Now, you just go on your phone. So, we really changed our information services focus a long time ago to one of focusing on how we can help people find too much information, which is, there's too much of. So, basically, the limitation of a search, taking, "I want to know about Italy," you know, and focusing it in and saying, "I want to know about the Colosseum in Rome," for example. And of course, those kinds of searches can be very obtuse if you go to Google and all the cyborgs that people try to use. So, that's been our focus. So, when someone comes to the library and has a phone that they don't know how to use, we will show them how to use it on demand. If someone has a new job and they have to use PowerPoint and they don't know how to use the current iteration of PowerPoint, they can come to the library and they can learn how to use PowerPoint right on demand. So, we try to, we work with, we work with Rose, economic development is part of the library plan. We always want to be a factor in supporting the business community. We have a business center. We have different kinds of collections which support business, you know, from IT to accounting. So, we try to cover all those things. But principally, the most important part of the public library in Farmington is our children's programming. Our children's programming is the basis of literacy, because if young people do not learn how to read in a way that they enjoy it and learn to love it and understand the language and all the things that are important about learning, then indeed, they will never use a library, and then I'll be out of business. So, it's very much self-preservation. People have to understand how important it is to read library books, because indeed, it's true that people who read at least one book a month live at least four years longer than that they don't. It's true that they're healthier. It's true that they have more fulfilled lives. So, reading is very important. And for someone who's passionate about what I do, I've been doing this work for 45 years. So, believe me, I under, am I getting too long, Kathy?
No, no. You're good to far.
They got to rein me in, because I get carried away. But anyway, so it's very important to read and to understand how important reading is. And young people who learn how to read are going to be better citizens, and we need better citizens. To further that point, I will tell you that because of the, and by the way, I don't really do anything. The people who work on my team do all the work. I just come up with some ideas and they all figure out how to do it, because I don't really know that much. But I do know this much, that our young people, our teens, who are the most difficult people to get engaged in reading, because you know all of what they're doing. But I was, actually, I was doing that in the back, because my wife has a flat tire in Southampton, Massachusetts, and she's texting me what's going on. So, anyway, the truth is, is the young people in Farmington, first of all, are very lucky to have such a wonderful school system. Kathy Greed does a fantastic job. Her predecessor said wonderful, I mean, I'm standing on the shoulders of Barbara Gibson, you know, my predecessor. So, you know, there's a lot of wonderful heritage here, but the young people are reading more. And I am tickled to tell you, they are really reading a lot more. And we have a wonderful relationship with the school librarians, media specialists, they call themselves. And we have a great relationship, and our summer reading program continues to grow. The kids are getting smarter. Life is good in Farmington. Just a couple of other things I want you to know, that we worked very hard when I first came to town here to refurbish and redirect the Barney Library, which is a wonderful, wonderful asset for the town. And Nancy's nodding her head, because she was a very big part of that. And we just had, we have a wonderful Barney Library. Those of you, I will not ask anyone to raise their hands, but those of you who have not been to the Barney Library, I just hope that you will go there. Furthermore, I want to tell you about our, we call it the studio. We have, we're going to be having our grand opening this coming Monday for the studio. Now, the studio is an adjunct and a connection to the Makerspace. The studio is a facility which has two basic aspects. The first element is a 3D studio where you can go in and see 3D, three-dimensional bodies. I'm using anatomy, because anatomy is one of the most interesting things that people like to look at. So, if you want to look at your eye, you can sit, put the goggles on, and call up the particular program, and go to the skull and pull your eye out and look at the sclera and look at what's bothering you. So, it's really kind of a very fun thing to do. So, we have the 3D studio, and we also have the VR, virtual reality. And we also have immersive reality, but that's coming a little bit later. And what we want to do is, is we want to kind of show people how and what we're doing. So, in the studio, we're also opening a brand-new program, which we're going to start initiating next week, where we'll be doing podcasting and streaming video. So, I'm going to be interviewing people of importance in the town in the next several months, so they can kind of say what's going on. For example, I'm hoping Kathy will come and Joe and Russ to talk about different things, and possibly the council, if they'd like to, to talk about different things that are important about town. And I think that's a wonderful way to bring the library to the fore, so people will think of the library. Because if you think about it, one of our big projects is going to be showing people how to do stitching. Now, stitching is when you take the virtual reality camera, put it on your head, and walk into the Stanley Whitman House, and Lisa Johnson, the director there, will give us a tour, and we'll look around, look around here and here, and we'll be capturing all that imagery. We'll bring it back to the library, and we'll go into a stitching program, and we'll put it all together, so then, when the little children come in, they can go through the virtual reality and look in the Stanley Whitman House and look up and look down and look around. And I learned a very, before, I'm done now, but before I- And I learned a very, before I, I'm done now, but before I stop, there's one thing I never knew, and I always thought I was pretty smart. The most valuable piece of material and most valuable asset in a colonial home was the bedding. Cloth has always been the most expensive thing, and if you go to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, I will val, you will validate that. So, I mean, I could talk all night, but I, my colleagues are behind me, so any questions, I'm glad to answer if I could.
Questions? Go ahead.
I have what I think is a brief one, but it should be a brief one. Thank you. You're very, I can tell you're passionate. What time is the grand opening on Monday?
It's going to start around 6:00 and go through till like 9:00.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Cheers. Thank you so much.
Before you go, I just have one thing. You talked about kids and teenagers, and I just, the one thing that I remember so fondly, Jay, is when you came to Farmington, to the Farmington Library, and the transformation that you brought about with kids. You had the upstairs in that library transformed so that teenagers could come in and felt like they could talk to one another, they could read a book, they could laugh, they could be, be themselves and enjoy each other as well as enjoying the library. And you made it a really a fun place. I mean, it was the time when things were changing with libraries, and you made that happen here with that, with, and the kids started to come up in, you know, the Alexander, his area up there, and, and it was just such a, became a home for a lot of kids. And that's all because of that transformation. You talked about many transformations, but that was one that I remember with kids. And all of a sudden, I'm coming down and spending time there and having fun in a library, not just studying, so.
Well, thanks for remembering.
Oh, I do. Thank you.
Hi, next, we have Nancy Perrin. She's our Director of Community and Recreation Services. Hi, Nancy.
I realized as I was doing this, I think I might be the senior staff member. Really scary. Well, thank you very much for letting me come speak. When I was planning on what I would say, I've actually been with the town 25 years this year, so I have a lot of experience in a few different areas within my department. So, I wanted to really make sure I hit everything. So, probably one of the first times I really wrote things out so that I made sure I didn't forget anything. One thing I noticed a difference in the 25 years is I had to do it at like 18 font because I couldn't see it any smaller. But the Community and Recreational Services Department's mission is to manage those resources, to provide programming, and to coordinate for a healthy community. And over the past few years, we've really started categorizing our services under three types of services, supportive services, recreational activities, and then those community enhancements. And we're actually organized into seven different divisions, housing, transportation, recreation, Westwoods Golf Course, youth, senior, and social services. We also provide a lot of staff leadership and liaisonship to many different groups, the Human Relations Commission, the Housing Authority, the Juvenile Review Board, the Fair Rent Commission, Farmington Community Chest, Services for the Elderly, and FOCUS, which is our local substance abuse council. And I just wanted to take a moment to just give a very brief overview of each of those different seven divisions. Social Services provides assistance to individuals or families in need, and it could range anything from assisting a resident with applying for benefits to in-depth case management, crisis counseling, and crisis support. Often, residents can come into our office to get assistance with filling out forms or applying for programs, or we may be going out into the home of a homebound elderly or disabled person who might be in the midst of crisis, helping them with support and services and providing that case management. For many of our social services, we are actually the application site for other outside programs, for example, Food Pantry, Fuel Bank, Direct Aid, the New Start Program. I could go on and on. Several of them we do. The next division, the Youth Services, we work with both youth and families. Our youth workers, one who is town-funded, and the second one who is funded from many different grants, not just one. They specialize in working with teens at risk through programs, activities, and counseling. A few of the key programs that really take quite a bit of our youth, youth workers' times are, is our JRB, which is our Juvenile Review Board, which is a nonjudicial hearing to meet with youths who have broken the law. And the entire focus is really on decision-making and restorative justice. And very often, we could have three or four teens come in for the same thing, and we may give them each a different, what we call, opportunity to provide because we really try to tailor, make it to assist the individual that's in front of us. We actually do it right in here, reverse, our youth is sitting down here. The Teen Center, which is open two times a week, one for high school students and one for middle school students, and that's actually supervised by our youth counseling staff. So, it's an opportunity for the kids to interact, play some pool, play some ping pong, play on some of the gaming systems, and then just talk to the youth workers. And lastly, our adventure-based programming, it provides obstacles, teamwork, building-type opportunities to develop communication and teamwork. Some of you may have seen at IAR and Westwood's, the ropes course and the climbing initiatives. We are the ones who assisted with those. We actually ended up developing this program as one of our recreation programs a few years ago as well, like our Summer Adventure Camp. Our Senior Services actually provide two really distinct, different services. The first is for those active seniors, and then the second is for the more frail, homebound seniors or disabled adults. And our Senior Center is a really multifaceted senior center. We actually provide over 150 monthly activities for the seniors. We have an active wellness center. We have health screenings, educational programs, intergenerational programs, social activities, health insurance is a big thing that people come in to get assistance with. We provide caregiver information and support, support groups, and just numerous classes. It's amazing, from woodworking to iPad to computer classes to different dances, Tai Chi, just a little bit of everything. For the opposite population, the frailer, homebound senior, we provide in-home assessments and crisis counseling for a variety of different needs. And it can include anything from people with hoarding issues to people with health and safety concerns to some, some pretty extreme mental health issues. And these cases typically are the most time-consuming and difficult. However, we usually find that we work cooperatively with either the police department, the fire department, health district, or some other state agency. The next division is recreation, and that's really dedicated to providing wholesome recreation and leisure activities for the enjoyment of all the residents in our community. Recreation promotes good health, friendships, and opportunities for sharing time with the community. The division manages the sports program, either through our own staffing or we contract out with larger organizations. And it can include those team sports, our soccer program, our basketball program, and the list goes on. Developmental programs, our tennis, our swimming, our fencing, or classes like martial arts. And then we do youth fitness-type initiatives, running, and then adult sports programs. Outside of all of these, we also facilitate camps, both summertime camps as well as school breaks camps, and then dance classes, and then regional activities like our swim team. We also are responsible for the scheduling and organizing of the field use, and that's something that we do in cooperation with the parks and grounds. The next division is housing, and we oversee a variety of housing programs in town and geared towards low-to-moder income typically residents, as well as we provide support for renters through assisting with landlord-tenant disputes. You know, they'll come to us and we provide that. Our main programs include the management of Maple Village, our senior and disabled housing, as well as several town-owned rentals throughout the town. And then we manage the federal Section 8 program as well, and at this time, we have 90 vouchers. These programs involve the staff inspecting the unit, so we actually go out into the home of every unit that is subsidized, whether it's federal or our own subsidy, rental calculation based on income, and then the oversight of the maintenance and the services at each of those units. The town also has a program, homeownership program called the Cooperative Home Ownership Program as well for low-to-moder income buyers. We oversee the transportation, and that, that is the town dialeride service. Currently, we contract out for that service, and at this time, we have two vans in operation that operate Monday through Friday, and we do give priority to medical appointments, but we do do several scheduled trips as well. And this year, we're going to be recipients of the state DOT's transportation grant, so we will be receiving a new vehicle, hopefully before the end of this fiscal year. And then Westwood's Golf Course, it's an 18-hole executive golf course. Since it's shorter, it really draws in beginners, seniors, ladies, and smaller fun tournaments. It's also home to several different leagues that play there on a regular basis. And also, in addition, in cooperation with Youth Services and Recreation, we offer a really highly-rated golf camp that incorporates the basic of play along with doing some youth-type services and recreational programming. And then that is all of our several different divisions, and they provide those services that I talked about in the beginning, those supportive and recreational activities that I mentioned in the beginning. But our community enhancement are those types of services that are really those large offerings that really make Farmington the special place that it is. A few examples of those is our annual Thanksgiving gathering, our annual egg hunt, our senior fair, or the summer concerts and movies and that sort of thing. These events involve the entire department. They're not specific to one, and they really strive to develop what I call those community moments, those things that really stand out for the community. Just a few important things that I wanted to mention is that all of our services work directly with residents of all ages. There's no limit to the age. Many of our programs that we administer are mandated or guided by larger state or federal guidelines, so we're following guidelines and learning those all the time. A majority of our programs are successful because of community involvement, and we recognize that. From volunteer coaches for all our team sports to the office volunteers at the senior center, we know that they help us achieve what we look to achieve. We have some really deep connections with other departments and numerous civic groups and community groups that do strengthen our services. A great example of this is our holiday giving program. We know very well that if it wasn't for the assistance of all, the fire departments, the police, our CERT team, and several sports teams, that we would not have been able to collect, package, and distribute over 300 baskets this, just this past holiday. You know, so we do rely on those people to help us. And we also regularly apply for grants and receive some outside funds for many of our programs. For example, we receive a grant for our Juvenile Review Board where we provide some counseling, grant for a lot of our caregivers' groups that we do, providing information and support. And actually, all the folks that work at our senior fitness, all the attendants that, and the trainers are all funded through a grant as well. And just a few programs that I really wanted to mention that I'm super proud of. One is our at-risk services. A few years ago, through a grant, I had developed an assessment tool to, when you go out into the home of someone who's either elderly or disabled, to determine what their level of risk may be in a storm, and so that we would know who we would need to check on and at what level we would need to check on. It was a whole point system. And last year, we made a connection with the police CERT team to assist us to complete those inspections on a yearly basis. So, it really has helped us get a huge, detailed database regarding residents in need in a crisis, from knowing someone's on oxygen to knowing that Mrs. Smith is a hoarder and the only way you're going to get into her house is the back door. It's a, it's a pretty detailed document that we have. Our intergenerational grant is another one that I'm really proud of. We are doing an oral history, and it's an intergenerational program between some of our high school students and our seniors to kind of capture some of those items that our seniors may know about, but it might never get passed down if we don't come up with those oral histories. So, we're working collectively to do that. Two years ago, our adventure camp graduated, our initial group who participated in that adventure camp. And they went on weekend adventures, and we went away for one whole weekend, and it provides all those extreme type of activities that parents typically don't want to take their kids to, like ropes course, cliff jumping, whitewater rafting. We actually utilize professionals to help us do that. But one thing I do know is that when you have 17 and 18-year-olds driving to summer camp, that you must be doing something right because we had quite a few. Our Senior Center over the past few years has developed the Fitness Center, and it's really geared towards senior and senior safety for exercising, but also for rehabilitation for after an injury or an illness, a hip replacement or something of that nature. And we're noticing in the past couple of months, more and more hospitals are actually citing our Senior Fitness Center as one of the places that someone needs to incorporate as part of their discharge. So, you know, we're really flattered by that. Before I close, I just wanted to share just a few things that, just a few excerpts from a few letters that we got from a few residents that I thought better explained the services than I did. The first is a letter from a daughter who sought assistance for her parents, who were just really failing. They were not remembering things. They were just having a lot of difficulty. She lived out of state, and one of our social workers went out and did an assessment in the home and helped them develop a whole care plan and got them tied in to resources. And the woman had sent a letter, and in the letter, it said, "We really appreciate all that you do. You probably think you were just doing your job, but you need to know, we have, we would have been lost without your assistance." You know, and that was just a really nice letter. The next was a letter from a participant from one of our support groups, and the participant wrote, "This, the, the group leader was very interactive with the group and made us feel like we could always speak openly about anything without being judged or disrespected. Without this group, I could, I would not have been able to emotionally handle my situation." And it was a grieved support group, so, you know, she felt very open to share. And the last was a letter from a family that participated in our holiday giving program. And we actually shared this letter with the sponsor who actually purchased the gifts for this person. We got the nice part of being able to hand them over, but, you know, someone had sponsored and given them. "But thank you from the bottom of my heart. It has been a hard year with me just losing my job from an injury. Your generosity has made our family believe in Christmas miracles." I just thought those three letters were really nice. I did bring, when you left, copies of our brochure as well as some statistical information. If you want to grab it, you're more than welcome to.
Questions for Nancy? Or comments? Thanks, Nancy.
You're welcome. I just want to make a comment too. When you talked about the people and knowing the elderly and who needed, who in town, what elderly people were alone or something, just brought to mind when we had the storm a few years ago, and when people couldn't get across the river and people were stranded in homes and we had no power for 11 days, and made me think of it with others, the police and with Russ, with the, you know, the DOT, I mean, the roads and looking out for people. You were all here and all worked, but those kinds of things, when you knew that so-and-so needed help, that someone could hear, I mean, we were all here in the, in the high school, so many of us helping out, but you knew those kinds of things that Mrs. Smith and Mr. Smith needed to be looked in on because they didn't have any, any extra, any way to get any, any way to have heat. So, you'd go out and look at those. I mean, it just, it's such a wonderful community effort with everybody to, to, you know, work with people in town and make sure people are, are okay in those kinds of situations as well. So, in those kinds of crises, really, you see, everybody works together and, but those kinds of things really made a difference in people's lives, so.
After that event, I think we lowered our caseload.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy. Next is Joe, our Director of Finance.
Thank you. Obviously, you all know me. I'm Joe Swetskie, Director of Finance and Treasurer, and I thank you for the appointment to be Treasurer again for this next two years. Just a little background, I've been doing this since 1979. I started in the city of New Haven, and I became a Finance Director shortly thereafter, and some other towns. I've actually been in six different towns. Farmington, hopefully, will be the last town I have to be in. The Finance Department actually has three divisions, the Tax Office, the Assessor's Office, and what we call Accounting. The Assessor's Office, you may be familiar with, they're the people who do all the assessment. They value all the property in town, personal real and motor vehicle. The, you may have all, you probably all, if your homeowner should have gotten your assessment notices. Hopefully, you're happy with them. If you're not, you know, please make an appointment to review it, to see what the rationale was behind it. We are doing the revaluation. You will be the fortunate and unfortunate recipients of that grant list when you set the tax rate this year. I'm not sure how it's going to play out at this point, but you will be, you'll be seeing more about the revaluation in the next couple of months. Assessor's Office, one thing about the Assessor's Office is not only do they assess the, or value the property that's taxable, we also value the property that's not taxable. One of the things, one of the themes I would leave you with, with the entire Finance Department is, we're really controlled by state law, especially the Assessor's Office and the Tax Collector's Office. And the Assessor's Office has numerous reports they have to fill out for the state on taxable, taxable and non-taxable property in town. So, we're actually revaluing or valuing all property in town, including Yukon Health Center, hospitals, any, anything to do, any property, real property, any personal property and all real estate. They also administer various tax deferral programs, tax-free programs for the elderly, for veterans. Applications are submitted to the Assessor's Office. They take, they do the intake, they do the accredited assignments. And once they're completed with the grant list, they turn it over to the tax collector. And you're probably all familiar with them. You've paid a tax bill in town. Tax Collector's Office, we collect taxes on property, personal property, motor vehicles, real estate. We also collect the specials, what we call special service charges, the sewer, sewer charges that we, that's levied by the WPCA, and also the waste collection charge for the collection of your trash. The Tax Office also collects, or they really collect, the depositing of collections from other agencies of the building, any cash that comes in from like the Building Department, Engineering, all that's They also administer the firefighters, the voluntary firefighters' abatement program. So firefighters get an abatement under taxes if they do certain things. That's administered through the Tax Collector's Office. The rest, the other division is what we call Accounting, and that's really a catch-all division. We do much more than Accounting, although everybody thinks of it as Accounting. Do the obvious things like payroll. We do payrolls every week. We do a large bi-weekly payroll, about 225 payees. We do a weekly payroll, much smaller, but some of our, such our highway and grounds people are paid on a weekly basis. Accounts payable, every week we do accounts payable, we process approximately 300 to 400 invoices each week, anywhere between a couple of hundred thousand dollars to several million dollars a week, depending upon what's out there, what's due at that time. Debt management, we talked about, and I'm not going to beat that one. It is a big part of the job in the office. The budget, right now I'm assisting Kathy with the preparation of her budget that she'll submit to you in a couple of weeks, or actually a couple of months. And then in March, I'll be hopefully assisting you in your preparation of the budget. So, and then throughout the year, we also monitor the budget. We're constantly forecasting, making sure that everybody's within their budget appropriations, making sure the budget's performing well, that revenue's coming in. Budget has two sides, and we have to monitor both, the money coming in and then the money going out. So we're always constantly monitoring that to make sure we're within our budget appropriations and making adjustments when we need to make adjustments. Cash management's another function of our office. Twice a year, we bring in approximately $40 million. We get grants, we get some money throughout the year, but during the month of July, we bring in close to, probably around $45 million. And then in January, we bring in another 30, 30 to 40 million dollars through taxes. Taxes are our largest revenue source in town, over 80% of our revenue is taxes. So they come in those two times a year. Throughout the rest of the year, we do receive grants, we do receive other types of payments that are processed. But those are the two times a year where the bulk of the money comes in. We schedule out that money, we invest that money, we do want to make a return on it. We do have to follow state law, very specific guidelines on how we can invest the money. So we make sure we're in compliance with that, with those guidelines. But we also try to get a return. These days, not a big return, we're talking a couple of hundred thousand dollars nowadays, but that wasn't too long ago, we were getting a couple of million dollars a year in investment return. So as you heard later, earlier today, tonight, the interest rates are going up, we are starting to see some increase in investment income revenue. I don't think we'll ever hit the $2 million point again, but it's a, but it's a big part of our job, is to monitor cash flow, actually plan out cash flow, invest the money, make sure it's safe, make sure it's liquid, and we also get some return on it. Purchasing's another role for our office. We actually have a somewhat of a hybrid purchasing operation in town. Much of our purchasing is decentralized within the departments. They do their own purchasing. However, we do a lot of bulk purchasing out of my office. We also do a lot of monitoring of purchasing. There are, there are requirements, legal requirements, both charter and state requirements that we have to follow. We make sure that those requirements are being met by the various departments. We do bulk purchasing for gasoline, for heating fuel, for electricity, for natural gas. Wherever we can do bulk purchasing, we'll take advantage of that, and that'll come out of our office. We also coordinate bidding. Anytime tonight that you've heard somebody talk about a project, a road project, or a purchase of a piece of equipment or anything, all that purchasing's come through the Finance Department. We issue the bids, we create the bid spec, we issue the bids, we open the bids, we work with the department on the award, and eventually if it requires council approval, I'll bring it to the council for approval. So that's another part of our office. We do a little bit of risk, what we call risk management, it's actually more insurance coordination. This is the property and casualty insurances, the workers' comp insurances. We do market that, we use a consultant to help us with that, but we do market it, we do go out into the marketplace, try to find the best rates and find the best coverages for the town. We also do this with the Board of Ed. They are under our insurance policies for property, casualty, and workers' comp. So whatever we do, you know, they're actually included in that. We also do claims, we also work with our claims adjusters when there are claims. We do get quite a few claims, pothole claims, as Jay mentioned, that's big this time of year. The town is sued for various reasons. We will work with the claims adjusters, we'll try to find the best defense or the best settlement and, you know, work it out, whatever we could to avoid, limiting the town's exposure and liability. Another big role for us is benefits administration. The town does provide benefits to our employees and to our retirees, and we handle all that through our office. As you'll learn, we are self-insured for our medical insurance benefits. We do run a cooperative joint insurance pool with the Board of Education, even though we have separate carriers, we do have a joint fund or pool, if you will. We do benefits administration for our employees. We, again, we market our insurance, try to get the best pricing, we try to negotiate renewals for our insurance. We do have a consultant that helps us with that. We also work with our employees when they have insurance problems. A lot of times, employees don't know where to turn to, they have a question about their insurance, they have a problem with the insurance company, we'll work with them, try to work it out. And even beyond insurance, as we do offer various products to our employees on a voluntary basis. We do the intake on that, we do the enrollment on that, we do the administration of all those programs. For example, 457 plans, deferred compensation plans, 401 plans, life insurance plans. So all that is done through the Finance Office. Another part of our job, and this is actually becoming a bigger part of the job, because we do have an aging workforce here in Farmington, and it's pension administration. We have a very good pension plan. As mentioned again earlier tonight, our pension plan is, we have a combination plans. We have a defined benefit plan for our employees who were hired prior to 2011. Anybody hired after 2011, with the exception of public safety, go into a defined contribution plan. So we're running a couple of different pension plans at this point. Our defined contribution plan is very healthy at this point. We're about 74% funded. We do, we do everything we're supposed to do. We do our annual evaluations. We have a very strong pension, hopefully we're still going to have, we have a very strong pension committee, they're involved with the investment management of it. They do the overall investment management guidance. I do the day-to-day operations of the investment management of the pension plan. We have approximately 300 retirees right now in that pension plan. We have 300 active and participants in that pension plan. We are involved in working with a custodian bank who, a custodial bank who issues the checks to people, but we also do the intake and the pension processing. When somebody wants to retire, they come to our office, we do their benefit calculation, we do their paperwork, we set them up, we set up their payment processing. If they have problems during the, throughout the year, we handle all that, they come to us, we do all the system with their, with their problems. Give you an example of what that would involve in, with something that doesn't even involve us, or wasn't caused by us, but the state of Connecticut passed a law recently that said, if you don't make an election on your pension, whoever processes the pension has to automatically default to a 6.99% tax rate. So many of our retirees have less than a 6.99% tax rate on their pension, because they're small pensions. And many of them don't have a W-4 on file, because their pensions aren't taxable, they're so small that they fall under it. Well, with the new law, everybody suddenly had a 6.99% tax on their pension, because they didn't have anything on file. We had to notify them, we gave them about six weeks to get a W-4 on file. 80% did not. Most of them didn't understand what they were supposed to be doing, and consequently, when their January payments came out, 80% of them had 7% taken out of their pension plan. So of the 80%, probably 50% called up and said, "What happened?" So we spent the first two weeks of January collecting W-4Ps from retirees and explaining to them what they had to do, and explaining to them how to fill out the form. Again, it's something that, you think, once a person retires, and somebody from 30 years ago retires, they go away, but they don't. They stay there, and you're still involved with them. So, and it's the same thing with medical benefits. We do have a retiree medical benefit program, we do all the administration of that program. And that's a big part of it. Now, I was listening to Nancy Puren talking about the elderly. Well, any of our elderly who are Medicare and Medicare supplements will come to us when a bill isn't paid and say, "Can you find out why?" And so we have people in the office who'll call Medicare or call Blue Cross or whoever they need to call to find out why a bill wasn't paid and try to get that bill paid or try to get it corrected for them. It's a big part of, it's actually becoming increasingly a bigger, bigger part of our office. I'd like to wrap up here. I'd just like to give you two, two points, make two points about the Finance Office and about the town in general. One is, a lot of what we do in the Finance Office is legal, is legal compliance. You're going to find that when you hear the audit report next year, next month, they're going to talk about, you know, all the legal stuff, all the compliance we had to do. Anytime a grant, there's a lot of compliance with grants. We have to make sure that the compliance is met. We have state laws that govern pretty much everything we do, and whatever state law doesn't cover, federal law covers. So we're always trying to adhere to, we're always adhering to laws, always trying to comply with everything and also establish best practices. Second thing I would leave you with is the notion that everything you heard tonight is interrelated. You know, Rose Ponte's a big help to me when I'm doing stuff for debt management, when I need statistics, when I have to put together the official statement. You know, I'm hopefully a big help to Russ, Russ Arnold and his people, when they need gasoline or diesel fuel for their trucks for snow removal, or for when, they have a grant. And Russ brought in $12 million in grants, and guess who would account for those grants? I mean, we account for the grants in our office. So all that comes through, the treatment plan, you know, even though it's not something that's directly over, under our supervision, right now, we're the ones processing $14 million in grant reimbursement payments. We're the ones who are doing the financing for it. Everything in town is interrelated, and everybody's interrelated. Whatever one person or department does in town usually impacts other departments in the town.
Questions for Joe.
Thanks, Joe, for your presentation. I have a question. When you were talking about the payrolls, you said that some of the highway and grounds employees are paid weekly rather than bi-weekly? I know bi-weekly is a more cost-effective way of administering payroll, so is there a reason why they're paid weekly?
It's just been something that's been in the absentee contract forever.
It's contract related.
Oh, it's contract related.
Contractual related.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's something that sometimes too, and it probably doesn't apply so much now, but at one point, it's like, usually the lower, let's say it this way, the lower-paid people usually get paid weekly, because they were more on a paycheck-to-paycheck basis in life versus other people. So, but it is contractual.
Thank you.
Other questions for Joe? Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. And last but not least is Erica Robertson, and she's the Assistant Town Manager.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I'll tell a little bit about me, tell a little bit about what I do and what we do in the Town Manager's Office, other than, as you know, what Kathy does there. But I think one thing that Joe left you with is important for me to start on, because we work with everybody. Everyone that came before me tonight, we are, you know, on a day-to-day basis, helping them in one way or another. We are an internal service department, just like the Finance Department is. We may not have the great interaction with the public, like the Police Department and the Senior, you know, Center, or even the Fire Department, but we kind of are the glue, if you will, that keeps the town running. We're the administration of the day-to-day operations of the town, you know, as needed. This is my 17th year with the Town of Farmington. I came here after I received my master's degree from the University of Connecticut. Before that, I was working in the West Hartford, in the Town of Taland, and even started at CCM, our local municipal conference here in Connecticut, as an undergraduate intern. So I've been doing this for over 20 years now. A little something unique about me is that I do this day in and day out, at home and at work, because my husband is the Town Manager of Avon. This is what we do, this is our life. We've been doing this, we met together, doing this, like I said, over 20 years ago. I could say I'm an internal service department, what do I do? I assist Kathy, I assist Kathy in any way she needs it. One of my largest roles, though, is to take care of the personnel functions of the town, to, you know, recruit and retain, train, do staff analysis, monitor all employee issues as they come up, manage labor relations. You've heard that we have five contracts here in the Town of Farmington. You know, I would say about 90% of our staff is unionized, so we have great labor relations. So it's not like I'm over in Weathersfield at the Labor Board every other day arguing. We absolutely do not do that. We have very good relations, and that's something I think everyone is, you know, proud of here in Farmington. You'll see in the next few weeks that I am also a member of the Budget Team, responsible for preparing the annual operating budget and the capital improvement plan with Kathy and Joe. We are a team that meets with all departments at this time of year, and we bring it to you, and we work to get that processed to referendum. I, in addition to personnel, you know, I also oversee the Technology Department, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And something that, actually, no one mentioned here tonight, is that every department head is responsible for their building. The chief is technically responsible for his Police Department, Steve Hoffman is responsible for all the Fire Departments, Nancy Staples House, Stone House, I'm technically responsible for this building, Town Hall. I am not a great HVAC person or anything else, I rely on everybody else to help me, Russ, things like that. I do special projects. Nancy talks about some of the things she was proud of over the last few decades. I'm proud of some things, for instance, Small Cities Grants that we did, $700,000 at Maple Village, $300,000 for town-wide housing, the Amresco Project we talked about at the last meeting, $3.7 million. Myself and the board, Building Facilities Manager, were the key town staff on that one, that worked through that process for many years, and it was a great, great program. Let's see. I'll do research and analysis for Kathy, will staff, Town Council Committees as needed. We've switched things up over the years. For a long time, I was the liaison to Green Efforts, and we did, during my time, Single Street Recycling, Solarized Farmington, we did the Amresco Project, we did, back in the early Obama administration, we did all the R.A. grants that came out at that time. So we've done a lot of, you know, a lot of good projects, all good projects without very little town tax dollars in place for those. One of the last staff committees I did for the council was the redesign of the webpage in 2016. And that, as we talked about last week, is an ongoing process. My office, we work on workers' compensation. Deb in my office is really my day-to-day person to do workers' comp and all the different employee safety programs that we have. Continue to work with residents, businesses, visitors on a daily basis, phone calls that come in, letters that come in, issues that come up, just helping Kathy and all the department heads as needed. I talked about the Town Hall, some of my projects were redeveloping this room about probably five or six years ago now, HVAC updates, generator updates, new front entrance, that was probably 10 or 12 years ago. Like I said, no one does any of this alone. We are all assisted by many, many great staff members here in Farmington. Deb, well, my office is my admin, she helps me with the recruitment, the different risk management programs. She is the designer, if you will, of the annual report, the town newsletters, she does the budget document, she is our sort of in-house graphic designer. Brian Rush, I can't say enough about Brian Rush, our Information Technology Manager. He is basically a one-man show. He has like two pages of things that he gave me that he does, I won't bore you with it, but it's everything and everything, every department, you know, we finally came to the 21st century since I've been here. We have specific software programs in police and fire, assessment, registrar, tax, town clerk, finance, everybody's got their own special system these days. And he definitely is the liaison for all of that, for the research and analysis that goes into getting a new program, to helping get it installed, helping the departments work through it, update servers, everything that you can imagine that goes along with it. He also works one day at the library, the library pays for one day of his services. You know, he is in charge of our entire phone system, all our data, all our cell phones, all emailing, all, everything. all emailing, all, everything you can imagine with IT, Brian is in charge of. And, you know, we have about 250 PCs here in the town, and he's the "I can't print" guy that you call to. What else? And you've probably heard from Kat, from Kat and Anna in our office, they are relatively new staff members that also hold public administration graduate degrees. They are young and they are eager to learn, and they are new to local government management careers, and we are very happy to have them. They assist Kathy immensely, they assist myself in anything and everything, personnel, general management, they have some of their own programs, garden plots, grant work, working with everybody that came before me tonight. You'll see them tomorrow morning checking everybody in at the economic development breakfast. So, the team in the Town Manager's Office, we get a lot done. We are miles wide and inches deep, if you will. These guys behind me are miles deep and inches wide. We have to do a little bit of everything, but honestly, I don't know how I could do it any other way. I love the variety. I don't know if I could just do one thing all the time. I've been with the town a long time. I look forward to more, you know, years working with you, with the community, and working with really what is a fantastic team of members that we have here. I think you saw that tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for Erica?
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we'll take a five-minute break. And thank you all for coming tonight.
I'd like to bring us back now to the meeting. Kathy?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to just make a comment about the team, my team. That is all my direct reports, that's our, the management team. And I hope, you know, that everyone is, they're extremely hardworking, smart, dedicated, 100% to the Town of Farmington. And I definitely couldn't do my job without them. And we, I think we have a really great relationship and a great team, and I just wanted to make that comment at the end.
Thank you. I was saying, you can see how enthusiastic everyone is and how much they love their jobs. We're very fortunate. Okay.
I move to take action on the budget targets for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, Kathy. So, right now, we are working on the budget internally with my staff. Historically, usually the meeting before this or, or at this meeting, the Town Council has talked about budget targets and whether or not they are going to set the budget targets for the town and/or the Board of Education. The town, over the years, have done it sometimes differently. They have done expenditure targets. They've sometimes had looked at maybe a tax rate that they were aiming for. Most years, the council has set a range. There's a lot of factors that we still don't know. The revenue side of the budget is, we don't know. So, really, we're working, if there was kind of on the targets, is really on the expenditure side. We haven't, we don't have our grand list in yet. We don't know what our revenues are going to be. So, again, I just put this on with, with Nancy and Bruce, we talked about it. I've given some information in the back that we just have lots of history, back from 1995, that shows, the first chart is that's really the expenditure side of what the increases were and what the total increases were per board, town, debt and capital improvement. So, we do have since 1995. Then we broke it out just for some averages, for a five-year history of averages of the expenditures, we, I have that. Then just for your, your tax rate history, and you can match your tax rate onto the expenditure. So, you can see in some of the years that you had higher tax, higher expenditures, you could very likely have a higher tax rate. It doesn't always correlate that way, because at one year, you could have had a very high, you know, a grand list or some different things. But, so, these are just some of the information that if the council has an interest in setting some targets, you should do so now, because it's, it's going to be too late if not.
And I, just a couple more things with Kathy. Sometimes when we, when you see these percentage changes on the last sheet, we might have opened up the school. That might have been a reason one year why the, excuse me, why the increase was more or something, you know, like she said, something happening in town that, that brought something up more so than another year. In the past, we have, well, as Kathy said, different things have been done. For the last couple of years, we've not set a single number, a single number. We've set a range, so that that allows for, it just seemed to be something that was more appropriate, because we don't know a lot of the detail. Rather than say we want a 2.5% budget, we'd say, you know, we want a range from above and below it or something like that. So, that is what we have done for the last couple of years. And I would, well, I'd like to suggest that we do that again this year. We have a range, and I'd like to, I'd like to suggest we have a range from about 2 to 2.5 for the board and for the, for the council. And we, and I'm, everybody, I want everybody to talk about that, why and why anybody might think we should or shouldn't, and numbers and the whole, you know, the information that we have before us. And I can tell you why I, why I base mine on what I, what I do. The reason that I said that was, I think there are a lot of reasons that we look at, I look at the averages over years, but I also look at what we've done in the last couple of years and why. Part of my reasoning of why we need to do something that's, of that around there or, you know, in throwing that out to begin with is the state budget itself, we're going to be looking at deficits for the next, in the next, in this year and the next year. And I'm concerned about how we're even going to end up this year. Right now, we're looking at, at a deficit for this year and next year, as well as we're going into that. We're, we have a lot of federal uncertainty right now with grants and with dollars. We're also looking at our debt going up 1.1 as we had information that was, you know, we, we taught, we had in our, from Kathy. The averages for the last five years were 2.68. And I think that, I'm also very concerned with the, with the schools and that I think we need to really address the high school renovation. That's going to cost money, and we need to make sure that we are thinking about that. And this council, we've been doing a lot of work right now, and, but we're going to have to take that up quickly. And that, I think, is going to be, be an expenditure that, that we, we need to be behind, and it's, it's something that we need to do for the town. Also, I think that the Friar study that came out, the ad hoc committee that came out with their study, I went through that, the, the information, and we're looking at anywhere from $61 million for basic upgrading or changes in renovation to $123 million with renovation in some of the, the plans for the schools. But that's a combination of K, K8. And I think that we're going to need to address those in many different ways. I think one of the ways we need to address it is, is with our capital plan, which I think if, last, at the last meeting or it might have been two meetings ago for the Board of Education, they actually proposed a $2.2 million capital plan. I think there are a lot of capital needs in the schools that we're going to have to address. So, those are also dollars that I think are all going around in my mind for, excuse me, for things that we're going to need to spend, spend money on. And that's not even the town buildings and the town equipment. We're looking at a reval year this year, and we're hopeful that with the, with the businesses, that's going to provide a really good, provide more dollars for us, even though the home piece, the residential, may be, may be troubling. So, those are just a number of reasons of why I've been thinking about this, and I think just to, I'd like to, you know, have a conversation about it and see. The one thing I do want to just mention is that this is, nothing that we do now is set in stone. Everything that we do has to, I absolutely believe we need to listen when we have Kathy does her budget before us and when the Board of Ed comes and talks to us. And I think that it just gives them some guidance of what we're thinking about and, and just a list of all the different kinds of things the town needs to be thinking about, we need to be thinking about for them. And I think there's only so much that the town will bear, well, that will deal with when we do our budget, the actual needs that Kathy, Greeter and Kathy come before us and talk to us about. So, so, to throw that out and start a discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Nancy. I really appreciate how you made that out. I want to start off by saying that I have a hard time setting a target. I find a number to be very arbitrary, especially in part because I am new to this process and this town and knowing, in my mind, nobody knows what the town needs better, or what the departments need, rather better than the people who are in the departments on a day-to-day basis. I definitely appreciate your comment that it's not set in stone and that we can take into account what people say over the course of the budget process. I share, I have not read the Friar report thoroughly, but I did read the executive summaries for the different ones, and I noticed there's a lot of capital improvements. And I've also note, and I agree, we need to address the high school. And I think my understanding is the high school, at least in its previous iteration, given the scope, would be, would not be included as part of a capital improvement of this budget, but it would be a separate referendum process. But I want to keep in mind the town's willingness to pay, because when we raise taxes, assuming the budget goes up and it results in a tax increase, that might impact the town's willingness to pay for our high school. So, these are things that I struggle with, that I've been trying to evaluate over time. I've also noticed that the capital improvement plans of prior years have been more skewed towards town capital improvements. I think it's 60, 70, 30, somewhere in that range. And based on the Friar report, I don't know if that's still, if the same ratio should stay, but I don't know what the town needs. I have a better handle right now on where the school buildings and what the schools need, because those reports came out. I'm still trying to think about what I think is appropriate for a target, if, I'd like to hear what other people have to say, as, I've been thinking about this a lot over the past several days, and frankly, I keep coming back with, not keen on a target, but I also understand the concept of trying to make sure that we don't shock the citizens and that we can create something that is palatable to the people who have to pay for what we're asking for.
Thank you.
I might have a slightly different opinion. I, I think a target sometimes will help us guide our departments. I think the one thing, and I agree with some of the stuff that Patty had said, there's, there's a lot of capital improvement projects that we have to be mindful of. The range itself, just so I understand the range a little bit more, I, I sometimes wondered what the range is really for, besides, are we looking for each department to fall in between that? Or are we looking for departments to kind of come in close to a certain number, and if they go above and under, for us to understand what that impact would be to the community? So, I'm not opposed to the range. I just would like, and I know you made the comments about you, in the past, you did the range. What that really accomplished for each department versus us as council to really understand that if they come in at the range, what services or benefits that they may and may not be cutting or increasing, and, and how do we, we look at that as a council? And I'm sure that's going to come out through the process. The other thing is, I'm not sure if we got any numbers yet from Joe in terms of the CPI and what's going on with that, because to me, I think that will definitely help us with coming up with either a range or a target.
2, 2.1%.
2.1. And, and that's for Hartford County or?
U.S., that's U.S., and then 1.7 for the Northeast region, change from December 2016.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
2.1 is the U.S. region and 1.7 is the Northeast region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to, well, just if I can help a little bit with, I think in years past, some things that have happened would be, for instance, if someone feels Kathy or Kathy come in with a certain budget, they would, for instance, say, if they come in to, within the range that, that the council has asked, they would say, to come in at this range, this is what it means. These are the services that we would provide. This is if, if it was a range and there were things that, sorry, I was looking, and there was a range that was different, up higher than, you know, that this is what I can provide with this range, but these are the things that you won't, that the town can't continue to do if I'm within that range. Or, these are the things, the additional, this is the additional person I feel that it is important to have this year in this, in the town. So, these are the dollars that I think should be additionally spent. And I think that it's always been an open flow and not a, not a, it's always allowed for a flow of conversation of what, what's in the town, what the services are, what that means to the town, if those budget targets are, are adhered to or not. That's kind of an expendable.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, I, I think picking a target certainly is a challenge, just given the fact that we have limited information. But I do agree with Bruce that I think it does help in at least providing a starting point in the process for us to move forward with. I, I do agree with some of the things that were mentioned already in terms of, you know, looking back at the averages of prior years, taking into account the state budget deficit going forward and uncertainty around that and how that will affect the town. Thinking about the high school renovate, renovation, and, you know, that will be an additional cost and, and capital needs as well. I want to thank Kathy for providing that information the other day for us. I think that's very helpful and did give us a little bit more insight into helping with our decision of having to come up with a target range. And I actually did take that data, that basically data of mandatory increases in the budget based on what's contractually we're obligated to cover. So, some of those items were, were increase in the pension contribution, increase in our debt service, health insurance, hydrant fees, potential increase in union salaries when that gets renegotiated later in the year. Then the electricity and water, I think you provided a 5% increase in electricity and a 6% increase in water. So, I went through the adopted budget for 2017, 2018, and applied those increases to all the departments and activities that have electricity and water as a line item. And so, after running my calculations, I came up with a mandatory dollar increase of $1,943,855. And then I took that number and divided that by the 2017, 2018 adopted budget total expenditures And that comes out to a mandatory budget increase of 1.89%.
Wait, just can I, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Okay, so, you took those numbers and you divided it by what number? 100 million?
Yeah, the total.
Except, except the numbers you're talking about are on the town side. The budget's 100 million. Am I missing the connection of how you're doing it?
Right. No, I think just in terms of the total budget, what that dollar increase would be.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying, that that is just the town side of the.
Yeah, these are fixed costs on the town side.
Right.
Okay. All right, sure.
Who are they?
Well, they could, that's what, they may not be. I mean, again, for purposes of your discussion, yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
At any rate, though, I think that was helpful and provides a good starting point for our discussion here tonight. So, just kind of considering everything, I think I'm comfortable with that two to 2.5 range or something similar to that range, something close to that range. So that's kind of where I'm at right now in terms of what I'm comfortable with.
Yeah, I can go. So I think actually, all of you guys made some pretty great points. Not to reiterate and get too redundant here, but I don't think the state challenges in Hartford can be overstated. And with the uncertainty there, I think a prudent approach to our budget would certainly be, I think, appreciated by a lot of people in our town. I think, Nancy, you touched on this, but the revale that just happened, we don't know the final result from it, but I know a lot of people in the middle class saw an increase there that they're going to have to digest this year. So that's kind of one step to it. So, anything we can do to control the increase, again, I think would be appreciated. And then I think everyone touched on, one thing I think everybody here agrees on is the capital needs, the Friar Report, you know, everything on the BOE side that we're going to have to do in the coming years. And, you know, there's going to be quite a bit of it. So, all that being said, I think a prudent approach to the budget is a good way to go. And I think, I think that's a good range as a, like you said, it's not a fixed number, but it's a nice starting point. And I think I'm comfortable with that, you know, low twos range as a starting point.
I've, yeah, just have to get into the conversation. I have a comment, I guess, a few comments and a question. I've certainly watched this process, you know, from over there for several years. And I always thought there was, or I experienced an amount of discomfort with the target, just because I think timing with it can be difficult. For Kathy on the town side, it's kind of early in the process. There's just a lot of unknowns with grant lists, state grants, other revenues. So we're lacking some crucial information there. And then on the other hand, the school budget process is further along. I know in December, and their December 11th meeting, the Board of Ed put out a projection of about 2.89. That's just based on bringing everything forward. So that's without adding programs or, you know, making any improvements or anything like that. So, on that side, it's almost late in the game. So it's just, I just want people to appreciate the difficulty in setting a target and how it can be somewhat arbitrary. But, on the other hand, I know that it's traditionally done here. It's, I've heard Kathy say that it's helpful and it's expected, so I'm perfectly willing to go ahead with that process. And I, two to 2.5 is not too far out of the realm as to what I was thinking about. If we have comfort that, you know, we need to hear from people and really know what the needs are and that's a fluid process. I would hate to set something at two and hear that that's putting everyone into a mode of cutting programs just when they're crafting their budget, so. So I did want to ask Kathy if, at this point, even if it's just based on your experience, if you have any kind of projection for your side of the budget.
Yep, I do.
Take that into account.
Yep, I think, you know, again, we've been, over our five-year average for expenditures, we're at 2.83%. And we're closer to 3% when we're adding new programs or doing things. I think that at a two, coming in on a 2%, the contracts right now that we see, we're all unsettled, are coming in at close to 2.5%. So that's higher than a 2% average, which, you know, will be difficult. Our utilities are up, our pension liability is going to be up. I think, again, which all of these, you see savings in different things. We haven't gone through the budget, we'll be able to do different things. I think coming in at closer to, I think maintaining services right now are going to be closer to 3% than it is closer to 2%. Just because of those different things, but we have not, I have not gone through it. I would probably be more comfortable, I think the process would be easier for us, is if my target was closer to a 2.5, which I think is a more realistic target without starting to cut, cut things out at such an early stage. And that possibly coming up with a list of some various things, because we haven't, because it's kind of a different process now, because you're all new, the strategic plan. But I think there's some needs in the town that you're not going to get any movement at all at this kind of target rate. And I think one of the things, and I'll just throw this out because it's something that I think has been up there, is that I think that we need to look at technology and a new technology person, not a new, an additional technology person, where a one-person show for technology. And I think that's, it's very, I think that's something that I have some concerns about. I also have some concerns on overall, just what I'd call technology, security, emergency management with, about what's going on in society and some different things that, when I said at the last meeting about what the strategic plan is, that, again, I think we need to be aware of some of those things. So, again, I always try to be more realistic and like I said, I think somewhere in a range. But I, to be, you know, if people are really looking for me at the expenditure side to come in at two, closer to the 2%, I think that's going to be very difficult for us to do. I mean, not impossible, but we're going to, you're going to see some reductions. You're going to see some reductions for me to do that.
And so when you would present during the budget process, you would say, "Here's where I came in and here's what that includes."
Yeah.
Just so you know, this is what I needed.
Yeah, these are some of the things.
What we're hearing we need and we won't be able to do, or that has to.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Or what you would like to do.
What, yes.
Like if putting a technology person in is going to bring me closer to 2.5, that's what the budget would be.
Right, right. And some of our, you know, and again, without the contracts being settled and you know that our contracts are a big portion of, you know, the budget, and they're coming in at 2.5%. So, but that said, we haven't looked at the budget as a whole package and there's savings and there's different things that we do as we go through it. But it's, it's, you know, I'm nervous about this budget because of the fact that I do see some perfect storms happening. But, you know, we do have a revale, which, again, hopefully will work out, but it just makes it more difficult. It makes it more difficult to explain the process, to have people understand it. So you have this, you have a revale. And, you know, we have to get the budgets passed. And the biggest part of getting budgets passed is getting people to understand the budget. And if you have a revale, that makes it more difficult. So that's the first thing. The state, I think what you said, Paul, I mean, we did cut our state funding back close to 30% last year, so I think that will help us. But I think that we're going to see that, and that's definitely an issue. You're also going to see, we, the Board of Education just put in a substantial capital budget into it. And I think that I agree with most of what everyone said, that we really need to look not just on that, but even on the town side of how much we're supporting the capital budget and the school side as a whole. So you have a large, a large capital expenditure that goes along with that. So, you know, with all those different things, we have not, we have shown that budgets that the tax rate increase that are over 3% have a lot of difficulty getting passed in this community. Not that they can't, because we can show the need and different things. But, you know, if you look back at some of the history, when the budgets were higher, they were higher because we were putting on, bringing in new schools. We had big, big population growth in either the town or the school side. So I think the community is going to be looking to, you know, what in these areas. So, I mean, I don't know if that helps, there's a lot of different things. The grant list hasn't come through, and hopefully that will help us out. And we're going to look at, for some savings and some different things. But I think, you know, we're going to be looking, you know, on the town side, like I said, closer to, you know, the higher twos for, to maintain the services. Kathy, may I?
Sure. Kathy, thank you. I appreciate your input in how this is going. And I do, one question about the state. So we still have to, we cut out 30% last year. Do we anticipate, would the plan be to estimate even less state funding this year, given, so would we have, would our, our tax base contribution to the budget have to increase even more based on the state condition?
Right, yeah, and I am, we, you know, just what I, we see and we read, I just don't think the state situation's getting better. So, whether it's going to be as drastic, you know, the one positive is that we just don't receive that much state grants to start with, so the makeup. But, you know, we get $4,145,000 that we have adopted this year. You know, next year, if, even if we're cutting a million dollars out of that, that makes, you have to make that up. And so it will make a difference of what we do. But then again, some of our other grants maybe pick up some of it. And so we haven't seen the whole picture yet. But I think that it's difficult when you're, when you're reducing your grants at that level in any one year. So, you know, I don't know if that helps or not, but, and I don't, we're hopefully going to get more information from our representatives and our legislative group and see how we're doing. But I would definitely say there's going to be a reduction. I just don't know if it's going to be at the level, if we're going to have to go another 30%.
Well, it seems we came out at the end of the year with, we were very cautious, which was a great thing. And didn't end up, you know, we came out in good stead with our, with our grants in the end. But we may have to, you know, look at those grants as we do every year. We pride ourselves on becoming less and less dependent on the state, you know, and which Kathy has done, which has really been a good thing, because then we haven't been tied to it. But I think that one of the other things, as Kathy mentioned, is that they haven't gone through their budget to see the pieces that are going to, as they always do with what they can do and not, what they will not do next year, or how they'll do things differently. But I don't, I don't want to jeopardize what we have today as our services. That's not my intention. My intention was just looking at these numbers and, and the CPI and moving forward and hearing what things are needed, what dollars are needed to provide services and, so.
And it's.
And with the, with the board as well. I mean, I went through the enrollment report and I think that the projection was six students, additional students. So really, it's not more students. We haven't had many in the last few years, which is a great thing, because the dollars that are there can be spent on other things, because the increase in students hasn't been there as it was a few years ago. So that's my reasoning too behind the board, but.
What usually I try to do, if it works, is that I try to, if we're going to have like maybe an overall arching policy or guideline, is that, you know, last year we really were very strict about, because we knew that there would be really no new services. And I didn't put anything in the budget for any new services. I do know that this year, and this is something, you don't know what those services are or whatever, that I do know that there may be things that this council is interested in. And.
Like technology.
Like technology, but there's, yeah, and there's some other things that are coming around and that possibly, that we kind of put them as, you know, on the side. And that, when the departments come in, then you're aware of those types of things. Because, again, we're not going to be able to come in with an 8% budget increase. And if I, if everyone came in with everything, but I do know, just based on some different things, that if I'm, it's very strict with no new services, I don't think that's fair to this group, because you haven't really been able to see some of these different things. But that said, I don't want to put you all in a situation where I, where people are demanding, and you're in a situation where you have a 10% budget increase and we're trying to figure out what to do. But I do think there are a few different things that the council may have an interest in. There's different things that I've been hearing about that I think, that I could put on the side and you guys could look at it as a whole and see what we, what we can afford, what's your, what's your policy direction? And, you know, try to maintain pretty much what we have now, and then maybe another list of how much it would cost to do some of these other things. That some are driven by me, some are driven by the various departments, and go from there.
Yeah, I don't want to hamper your, the possibilities for some of these things either, so that, you know.
Yeah, and I, and I kind of look at this range as really a guidepost to kind of help each department, as well as you and Kathy, to manage around that. And, and again, first time going through this process, I would look for, if things are above that range, is really talking about the needs and the wants of the community and why we're needing it. And then if there's stuff that isn't going to meet that range, what that impact would be. So I think it gives us a talking point to really understand the budget process as we're going through it. It doesn't, it's not, we're voting on, this is what it is. We're going to vote on the overall percentage increase. Once we hear from everyone, it's just giving them, again, a guidepost to march towards.
Right.
And to see how they come in and understand the impacts to each department based off of what we're giving them a direction towards.
Well, and just, just so I make sure we're both on the same page, one of the things, though, is that when I look at the target, I look at the target, obviously to get to a target at 2.2 or 2.5, most of the departments have to be at that level, because I wouldn't be able to get to the target. But when I look at each of the departments, sometimes numbers could be high because of various reasons. I may have, in the fire department, there may be new training requirements, so their budget may be 6%. And in community and rec, they may be 0% because I have to come to a 2.25 overall.
Correct.
And one is being driven by something else. And I look for the big picture. But obviously, most of the departments have to fall to get to that number. So I don't usually, when I target my departments, I go through and we look to keep as close as we can to whatever that range is, but then look at the individual needs of each one of them to come up with a whole bottom line at the end.
Yep.
Okay.
So at a two point, if you're looking, if you're talking about a 2.2, we're talking about the range going up to the 2.5. That's something that, as opposed to a two. Okay. Good night.
I'm, having heard what Kathy said, that based on the estimate of a 2.5% increase, the, that maintaining services 2.5% is a more reasonable target, I'd be more interested in a range that was slightly higher. I know she's going, Kathy said she'd come with a list of services that she would, you know, I don't know, on the side of the paper, just saying, these are other options. But I also want to convey that there are things that I'm interested in seeing in the town. Rose spoke to some of the challenges and I heard, I mean, I saw it a lot this summer, just, we do have an aging population and we need to figure out ways to attract younger families. And I'd be curious to see what some of the services are that we can offer that might have that effect or that might be providing services to an aging population, a way to address some of the economic business development. I think that's a lot of what keeps Farmington vibrant while maintaining its historic character. I think there's a challenge there. In that regard, while I'm hesitant to set a target, and I'd love to be able to say, "Show me what you want, this is not an ideal world," I would propose a moderate increase of two and a quarter to 2.75, just to, if 2.5 is maintaining services, I want to show a willingness to entertain some other options.
I was going to ask you if the 2.75, what that would mean, it sounds like that's more.
Yeah, right.
It's still a range.
Sure.
But it would give you that opportunity as we're going through the budget to, I mean, you always come in at our budget.
Right.
I know that from past experience. So you'd be dying to come in at the 2.5, I mean, you'd be really, so this allows that extra piece for you to be able to say, this is, or, and if you end up at 2.5, you do.
Right.
But it gives you that opportunity to.
I think that's definitely, definitely a more realistic number. And again, but I want to be clear that I'm, that that 2.75 is not with any, again, I haven't gone through it, if there's savings and things like that, I don't want to be like, it's automatically that. We always look to see what we can do. But history and what I've said, that's probably closer to just maintaining what we have. And then, like, we do it on both ends. I'll have what, some of these other things of services. And also, because if we have to make cuts, I'll have it on the other end to get what would happen if I was closer to a 2.25, what would be both sides of the equation for everyone? Because I think you're going to need, I, when we prepare our budget, we do, you know, A, B, and C, what goes first. You know, the A is what's, B goes, and then C is the last thing. So I will have all of that. But I, again, I will, we haven't, we just started going through things, but like I said, just because of the contracts and some of these other things, I wrote right here, I think we're going to be closer to, you know, on the higher end. And that's what the averages show for maintaining our services anyway, so. But I think that's fine, yeah. But I think that's fine, yeah.
You can breathe with that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I think one of the things I was going to do, and we're going to talk about it at the capital budget too, but, you know, we do, we, I was going to be putting in a full capital budget on the school side. We don't usually do it that way, but I figured with the whole study and we're going to be meeting. But again, we'll talk more about that at the capital, how you want me to do that. But again, those types, and we have to have a discussion about it, you know, adding an extra million or, you know, 2 million in anything, when you're doing debt or you're doing a capital, you're, you're bringing your range for your taxes much higher than what we're used to here. So again, we're going to have to look at that whole thing, just because it just says, if you're adding a million dollars in debt and you're adding a million dollars more in your capital and you're taking out a million dollars in your state funding, you're not going to have a, a 3% tax increase. That's just not going to happen. So, anyway, so more to come with that, with the capital when we talk with the board, because I think we do truly have some needs about maybe how we're going to fund this long-term board capital funding, you know.
Well, and I think some, that's something I'm, I'm really interested to have a, a conversation about, because some towns, when there's a big ticket like this, if there are a lot of needs, we don't put it all in the capital. There may be a possibility that we should be going out for a specific, and that depends on what we heard tonight with the timing, with the dollars. But some communities have gone out and had a specific referendum for schools or for buildings, whether it be a firehouse or whether it be, and not having it in your capital, in your operating budget. So there are different ways of things we can talk about, which we certainly have to then think about what are, what the timing is with all the information we had tonight, with whether you do it in 2020 or 21 or whatever. But there may be options, because the, the numbers we're talking about right now, the 2.25, 2.75, don't include the capital, as you all know.
Right.
And what's very helpful too, when we come to budget, is that we ask Joe to put together what ifs, what if we have these, this number for the board, this number for the, for the council? And then with our debt being X, and then capital, what does it mean for the bottom line, looking at what we think we're going to get for grants? And we go through a number of scenarios of what we think the, the community can bear with the bottom line of their increase, if we did this and that. So that's really helpful and it's really eye-opening to see those, those things from, from Joe as well, just like your information was tonight. So, anyway. So I'm happy with the 2.25, 2.75. And I thank you, Kathy, for.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would like to amend the motion to move and set the rate at 2.25 to 2.75% budget targets for 2018, 2019 fiscal year. Is that okay?
We have to designate for the council and the Board of Education.
For the town and the Board of Education.
Unless that wasn't your intention.
Sorry, is that?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, I, I think I'm comfortable after hearing from Kathy, kind of what's needed to maintain the core services of the town. I'm comfortable with that 2.25 to 2.75. And just one question for you, Kathy. When you do come back to us with the budget, will it be at line item level detail, the same as what we see in our 2017, 2018 adopted budget packet?
It'll look like that.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think I'd just like to add that.
Sure.
Clearly, I'm comfortable with that. I think as we go along, I've, I've not known Farmington to be a real crazy spending town. I think even with a slightly higher range than what we talked about, I know that Kathy Reader and Kathy Egan, they work really hard to present lean budgets and talk about, you know, what it means in terms of continuing to improve things, but doing so in a way that is palatable to the, the community and also meeting expectations, but being mindful of that tax increase. So I think when we see the recommended or budget requests, we'll see some, you know, responsible options and, and we can look at it in more detail then. So I think this is a move in the right direction for now, where we're at in the process.
Okay, any other comments? I just want to thank you, Kathy, for your comments. And every dollar that's always spent here is well-spent. And I absolutely am in this town. So with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Okay, and now on the main motion. Now we'll move on the main motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Okay, and?
E2, sorry. E2. I move that Guy Wolf be appointed to the land acquisition committee beginning immediately for an infinity, indefinite term, thanks. Infinity. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Okay.
I move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Thank you.